Mine wasn't. Mine was totally down.
I don't know if she almost heard.
I did, but no one's listening.
No. Go to, um, see the homepage there? The little tiny one.
Little tiny one.
You had...
A agenda's in minutes.
It's light up here like a...
It's not a continuation to it.
Use this way.
There you go if you want.
No, it's... It's still coming. You guys don't have any patience.
No, no.
Which one did you want to... Agenda's in minutes? Is that that fastest one?
Okay.
Must be here.
At home. At that homepage?
Yep.
And at the bottom is the, um...
Calendar?
Calendar. Hit today's date and the board of appeals.
Should put in more details.
Well, it'll come up anyway.
Board of Appeals, got it.
And then Agenda. And you might have to hit that one again, but once it cycles through again. Oops.
Get a faster router. Going Board of Appeals.
Having trouble with the...
And the dates right.
Oh, if it's wrong. Okay, yeah. What was the... Assistant coming down.
I'm getting, uh...
About downloaded agenda. They hit it, but I probably missed it. Let you get started. February 1st.
See that?
It's not you. It's a stupid apple.
It is seven o'clock. We're gonna open the meeting. If we could be quiet. It's a very crowded room, obviously. We are televised tonight. So, please be kind. Our first hearing is 152 Turnpike Road, JNN Realty Trust. They'll be reading a letter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. For the record, my name's Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of DeShane &amp; Farrell. I'm just here tonight to request a withdrawal without prejudice of the entire application. I'll read you my very short letter. I am writing on behalf of my client, JJN Realty Trust, to ask for the application for a special permit and variance previously submitted for the property, 152 Turnpike Road, be allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would ask the board to move to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, 152 Turnpike Road.
I will second that.
Second by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next hearing is 24 Garland Road. Mark Beatty is seeking a special permit under 195-8E2 and any other relief deemed necessary to construct a new 20 by 22 addition to a non-conforming structure, lot area, frontage, side setback, which will increase the non-conformity on the side setback. Someone here representing Mr. Beatty this evening?
Would I put it off unless he was a little late?
I guess I would ask for a motion to continue this till later this evening in the hopes that Mr. Beatty joins us.
I'll make a motion to continue 24 Garland Road to the end of the meeting.
Second, please.
Second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye. We're cruising. There was nothing there.
We have a Donald Ave. Robert Pace is seeking a variance under 195-9 conformity to construct a new home on a lot that will not, does not conform with frontage and lot area to the requirements in the RB District and any other relief that may be deemed appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin that public hearing in the interest of saving a lot of people in this room on another matter for sitting here, if I may ask as a point of order that you take one matter... I'm doing the hearing for Donald Avenue, but I'd like to withdraw an application on another matter and it will allow a lot of people in this room probably to leave. So if I could ask that you take up the 54 Parker Road matter because we were intending to ask for permission to withdraw.
Okay, so I think I would ask for a motion to continue Donald Ave till later this evening.
Make a motion to continue Donald Ave until later in the meeting.
Second.
Second by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll be taking out of order Pam Vega, 54 Parker Road. It is a continuance for variance under 195-9 conformity to split an existing conforming lot with a non-conforming structure.
Again, for the record, Douglas Hauser from Lampard, Hauser &amp; Rodman, representing the applicant who has asked us to request from you the right to withdraw the application without prejudice. Please.
Motion to that effect. Motion by Jerry.
Motion to accept.
Second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
To let the neighbors know they don't have to wait for the rest of the evening.
If you're here regarding 54 Parker Road, the motion has been withdrawn. There'll be no further action on this application at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very welcome.
If you want to do Donald Avenue.
We will go back to Donald Avenue. I don't think I need a motion. I think we can just open that up. I've already read the letter.
It's not working either.
Ten o'clock now, after all. Yeah, that one doesn't work.
It's not working for you either?
It's working good.
I had issues when I tried at home. So they're having issues with stuff.
Make it harder.
That's not good.
TV doesn't work either.
Put Chromecast on there. I can cast it on there.
Mr. Hauser, regarding this application, I'm looking over the letters that have been provided by the town and I have one that says, from the building department, "The plot plan is not stamped, signed, or certified."
It was supplemented and I sent it...
You do have it at this point?
Oh, yeah. I had it. I brought it in. I emailed it to Colleen. I have it here and she, I think, had provided copies.
It may well be. I just was reviewing the letters when I saw that. So if it's stamped, we're in good shape.
Yeah, we're blind.
Well, it's on here. It's there.
That's all. I just read the letters. I didn't know that, you know, then following up.
Just trying to get the TV on. Yeah, we can't see because these links aren't working here.
Oh, thanks.
I don't have one. Thank you. Good deal. I'd rather this anyway.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant...
This is the...
I'm representing the current applicant who has a option to purchase, purchase and sale agreement on the property. Property doesn't even have a real number to it. It's commonly known as Ford Donald Avenue, but it's not an official address. In my understanding is, based on the history of this particular lot, it's almost a duplicate of the petition that was before the board last year. If you cross Donald Ave across the street, it's almost identical size, same frontage, and this board granted a variance for that particular lot. My client is trying to do the same with the lot across the street of same size and same 100-foot frontage. The one difference here, and there is one neighbor that I did speak with earlier today, which was Mr. Kenny, who is in a butter, but he's off of East Randall, which is west by one block. So basically, as if you were going...
The backside?
Backside. And what Mr. Kenny said, and I think I take his comments very seriously because he's done a lot of work for the town and has served as an East Chelmsford Water District Commissioner. So Mr. Kenny says that this particular lot and the land, it tends to, the water tends to, the stormwater tends to sheet back towards his lot down to East Randall Avenue and then he's getting a lot of water on that road. So I spoke to him and he's here. What we would, I suggested to him is that if this petition was allowed, this application, the construction of that single-family home would in fact result in better stormwater management and should improve the situation fairly dramatically because it would be raising the level of the lot to stormwater the engineering side of it, to get the water out onto Donald Avenue as opposed to going back to East Randall.
We have 101. So right now, we have quite a few variations. It appears that at the Donald Ave entrance, it's 101, 102, 104, and then it tapers back down again in the back, 104, 103, 101.
Right now, it's raw land, so water can, stormwater, as you know, can move fairly easily, especially in large storm situations where as opposed to the house is built, certainly there's going to be some impervious area, but at the same time, there will be techniques, engineering techniques employed that will allow the stormwater to be better managed if this variance is allowed. So there are, and they have the existence of the wetlands, but this is very consistent with the lots and the areas I set forth on my materials that I've supplied to the board. And again, this board did almost the exact same grant of a variance across the street last January with same frontage and same lot area. And my client realizes that it will have to go before various boards, such as the East Chelmsford Water District, and it may need to go before Conservation. I'm not 100% sure of that. I think it will.
The house sits where it is. I think you will not, but that is not my decision at all.
It's not mine either. I just say, we know we have several boards we have to go through. But this is the first step.
Okay, are there any questions this evening of Mr. Hauser?
I guess as a start, I'd like to know about the water on that entire street.
What I understand, Donald Ave is relatively okay?
Do they have a stormwater? Potable water.
Oh. That's going to be addressed by the East Chelmsford Water District. What I understood from Mr. Kenny is that there's a one-inch line serving a number of homes on that street now. So my client, if he seeks to get a building permit, may, has to work out some arrangements with the East Chelmsford Water District as to how to supply that water. Otherwise, he's not going to be able to do anything with the lot. So it could lead to a better water improvement situation for the neighbors because a line may have to be installed that is a larger line. So there are a lot of benefits in this particular instance for granting the variance because it will deal with stormwater and potable water for neighbors as well.
So with a one-inch line, I'm guessing there is no fire hydrant on the street?
I'm unaware of that. I can't tell you. I would think there is not with a one-inch line.
I have a letter from Fire Prevention, which I don't bet I will read in, but there are no concerns from Fire Prevention. Not sure of the requirement for a hydrant. Apparently, they do not have concerns. I do not have a letter from East Chelmsford Water District to read in. Is that the lot there in blue, Colleen?
No, I'm trying to pull it up right now. I spell it right.
Ave, yep.
Man, I'd been in school. While waiting, I'm going to ask, are there any comments or concerns from anyone in the audience this evening? If you'd like to approach the podium and please give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Ferrera. I live at 67 Rivonak Road. And that house is going to be a button, my property. And that is wetland, Isaiah. And in the summer, I have a pipe in the ground underneath, you know, a cover and the water's up almost to the top of that pipe. So if he builds up that land, what's it going to do to my land? That's my concern.
You have like a well to observe the depth of the water? Is that...
Yes.
Is that understanding correct?
Yes.
And it's highest in the summer typically?
It's high in the summer, yes.
Can you show us where that pipe is and is it in proximity of this...
It's probably 15 feet off the boundary line.
The requirement of any lot to be approved in town is that it leads no water from the site. Any water that enters that site, and an engineer would design this, and I believe the oversight is by the town engineer, but any water that enters a site must be captured and contained in some fashion so it goes back into the ground correctly rather than sheet flow onto another property. It's got to be recycled, if you will, through a filtering system and then put back in. You know, an engineer would certify that. So I can't speak to how it would affect your ground level, but their obligation would be to ensure that any water that enters that site is treated and migrates back into the system correctly.
Okay. When we were kids, we used to skate back there. That's, you know, it's so wet, you know, it's... I'm just concerned about it.
Yeah, I mean, for wetland obligations, they will, if it's wetlands indeed, and it may be, I do not know to that. I've been back there. I've seen the other house going up. If it is wetlands, then they will be under the obligation to go to the Conservation Commission and receive approval or denial from them to build the house. But it's not our purview to oversee that. The wetlands are another issue that, if it is wetlands and if you're skating on it, I'm sure that there's a potential it is. They'll have to go to yet another board in town to get that approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Yes, sir. Please approach the podium and your name and address.
My name is Bill Wilson. I live at 12 Donald Ave, down the end of the street. My concern is with runoff water from that property. I have a culvert in front of my driveway and a pipe that goes underneath the driveway and the water's supposed to go into the culvert and out to the highway. When I first moved in five years ago, I used to flood out only in the springtime. But now, every time it rains, heavy, the end of my driveway floods out. So my concern is what's going to go on with the water coming off of that property.
An increasing runoff, which, as I explained to Mr. Ferrera, it should be mitigated by an engineer for the lot to be functioning. I know that's sort of easy to say, but not definable.
Well, I see the lot going up across the street and they built it up so high out of the ground that they're shedding the water off that property and it's just coming across the street to my yard.
Yeah, I can't speak to how that is, how that drainage was designed. I do not know.
Okay.
But I know that it's required that they control that drainage and that it can't leave the site to anyone's property, town, public or private.
Okay.
So I don't know whether the drainage is complete on that house yet or there are plans to contain that as they should.
I know they're not finished, but for right now, it's draining off. So my concern is with the new lot, is that going to add more water to the street?
When you construct on a lot, you certainly create more impervious. The other advantage is it usually is landscaped and the grass and soil act as a buffer to retain that water to hold on.
On a driveway, though, if they put a driveway...
No, that is in fact an impervious surface, the same as the house.
Right.
What is often required is that the drainage that comes off the house and the driveway be mitigated in some sense by a dry well or a relief mechanism to absorb that water back into the soil.
I mean, as long as that happens, I have no...
It would be a requirement of the town that the drainage be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Will we require drainage? We could require drainage.
Could require the... Follow all drainage requirements.
Isn't that required anyway?
Well, it is. I want to specify that the lot is, there's a lot of concern to the water. Maybe we should specify that all roof runoff and impervious surfaces be treated without having to do. It's just really, you know, a ditch or a swale of water to go in.
Is that a form of treatment?
That is a form of treatment if it is held on site and then leaches into the ground. That's a form of treatment. Dry well is, or a swale is...
So they wouldn't have to do that anyway, whether we said it or not? I'm just trying, does our statement mean anything? Are they held to that?
I don't know. I think they have to.
Regardless of whether we say it.
Right, correct.
That's kind of redundant.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions this evening regarding Donald Ave? Seeing none, I think I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
And we can take this up right now if there are no...
Second.
We'll close the public hearing. Take it up right now. We have a lot across the street that we approved about a year ago. It seems similar, as small as it is. It is keeping with the size of the homes on Donald Ave or the size of the lots on Donald Ave.
I don't, being new, I mean, we've had several undersized lots recently that, you know, there was a question of can you even get a variance because they're not conforming? So how did the other one get a variance and why would we even consider it at this point?
I think we set a bit of a precedent with the other one. It is, the board has a vote here so we could decide what is the right way to go with this. It seems to be in keeping with the size of the lots. They're all very similar on Donald Ave with the exception of Mr. Ferrera's property, which is much larger.
So he's looking for...
He's looking for relief.
Variants for frontage, lot area, and any other relief that may be deemed appropriate. Sounds far-reaching.
There's a couple of those on here.
It is because we put that in the legal ad that way. Just in case something comes up, we don't have to re-advertise.
The request was for frontage and area.
Right.
So it's meeting all the setbacks.
Right, so we're not looking for relief... Frontier or side.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the boards, just one comment. This has always been, this isn't a lot that's resulted from the subdivision of other lots. It's a lot that, these lots, 237, 238, have been together and this is the lot, so to speak, since 1920. So it's not that it's a leftover parcel that's been carved up by others.
That predates zoning.
Predates the zoning. So that's why it's consistent with a lot of the homes in that particular area.
This lot would be grandfathered, Mark, as a buildable lot?
I haven't seen anything that tells me it's grandfathered. I haven't seen a grandfathered lot package with a, you know, a title search and all that stuff. Nothing's been presented to me except the plot plan and the original description to build a house on it.
Do you have documentation?
Can I presume Doug that it was held in common ownership and that's why...
I don't believe it was held in common ownership with another lot. I don't believe it was.
Well, then why wouldn't it be a pre-existing non-conforming lot? Does it have 5,000 square feet?
We have 5,000 square feet.
13.
My concern is...
We have 100 feet of frontage. Let's suppose 150.
Yeah.
But if it's pre-existing...
I could be wrong, but I thought that at one point or another, there... This is part of the Ferrera parcel, along with many other Ferrera parcels. So I don't know if it was somehow ever affiliated with any of the other lots in front of it. So it could potentially be a grandfathered lot. To be honest, given the fact that you had acted so positively on the other one across the street, we didn't go through the investigation of it. We think we should get the relief here. It's entirely consistent with the intent of the zoning bylaw in that particular area. We're meeting all the other dimensional setbacks. We're not affecting anybody's privacy. We're, in fact, if you're allowing it, the lot, there'll be improvements to the stormwater issues and there will probably be an improvement to the water, potable water for the rest of the neighbors because there's going to have to be a line, water line addressed for that whole neighborhood. So there are a lot of pros to allowing this variance versus just granting it for the sake of granting it.
How does the lot improve the storm... How are you going to help with the stormwater for the...
Because they're going to have to affect the land. They're going to have to demonstrate through a certification of an engineer. Right now, it's raw land, so nobody's engineered it at all. Engineer, if my client goes to pull a building permit, it's going to have to demonstrate to the town engineer that it has mitigated stormwater runoff, both what exists today, it'll be equal to or better than. And Mr. Beatty knows that from being on the Conservation Commission as well. So I think that's how we're going to be making an improvement, addressing not only the gentleman who was down at the end at 12 Donald because we'll have assisted in managing some of the stormwater management, but also going as far back as Mr. Kenny's land on East Randall. So I think we're going to be winding up, making it a much better situation and maybe perhaps we'll have to tie him with some work that's going on across the street. I haven't seen their engineering yet about how they manage their stormwater.
I guess based on the statement, what I'm taking away, when you say equal to or better than, it's more that you won't make it any worse. You may make it better, but if it's already fine, it will just be as good as it was before.
Right.
So you're not guaranteeing that you're going to improve it. You're just saying you're not going to make it any worse.
Certainly not. We can't make it worse. That's my own, I'm not the engineer.
Okay.
But I'm sure it's going to be designed to create benefits that any kind of engineering design has got to be better than the raw land that's there now. Because water can go anywhere.
I disagree with that. I think it's possible, but I wouldn't, I've seen bad engineering designs, so I wouldn't say it's going to be...
Steve, if I can ask Doug a question.
You're going to have to go to Concom and get an order of conditions.
I think so, yes.
It's in a buffer.
To the extent that they're required to get an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, they are going to be required to comply with the state stormwater management policy, which does not allow you to increase the rate of runoff off of the site. So that would really be something that Conservation would look at.
Yeah.
So it just won't get any worse?
Right. Yeah, they're not required to make it better under the Wetlands Protection Act. Yeah, exactly. In fact, under the Wetlands Protection Act, you can increase the volume of runoff. You just can't increase the rate.
I guess my point, it's better to be managed than unmanaged. That's kind of where I was heading.
So regarding the grandfather thing, I would like to know that this was a lot, you know, in 1920 or prior to zoning to, is that...
I think that'd be something that would be nice for this board to actually have a better understanding of, which would always prefer to grant special permit and finding relief under 48 Section 6 as opposed to granting variances and such as that.
Exactly. Well, I guess I would ask, Mr. Hauser, if you could, I don't know, do we have to reopen the public meeting to accept that testimony? Which is not a problem either.
Yep.
I would ask that we do a little research on the title of this and understand its history in the hopes that we could grant a special permit as opposed to a variance.
May I confer with my client for a moment?
Certainly.
If you'd like us to, we should continue it. We'll do the research for the grandfathered lot status. But we're not, we're going to withdraw our application for the variances. If it doesn't meet the grandfather status, we'd still like to be able to get the variance.
Are you asking for a continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
So you need to make a motion for, to reopen the hearing?
Yeah, motion to reopen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded?
Me. Nancy?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, Jerry did. My apologies.
I did. I think Steve did.
Steve, gotcha.
Mark made the motion. You said it. She raised her hand.
Nancy can make the motion to continue.
Now can I get a motion to continue?
I will do a motion to continue. Donald Ave.
Second.
Until, when are we continuing until?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
March 1st.
March 1st. March 1st, Doug?
That's fine.
You need an all-in-favor. You need an all-in-favor on that, the vote for the motion to continue.
Motion to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's important. Oh, my goodness. We have a... We have a, another administrative appeal of 104 Turnpike Road, Tracy Cole, pursuant to General Law C48 subsection 15 of the decision of the Planning Board of the Town of Chelmsford approving 168 multifamily development. The petitioner alleges non-compliance with various articles and sections of the zoning bylaws, Article 3, 4, 7, 11, 23, and these are all Roman numbers apparently. If it's not L11, I don't know what it is. And 24, and zoning district map, B A O D map, chapter 195, attachments 1, 2, and 3. The property is located in a limited industrial 1A zoning, IA zoning, district within the Route 129 BOAD at 104 Turnpike Road, map 86, block 328, and lot 21. I'm going to clarify here that this is an administrative appeal of a decision of the Planning Board. The Board of Appeal does not hear administrative decisions from the Planning Board or any other board in town, for that matter. The applicant is asked to explain why he feels we have standing in this matter, and I've agreed to let them speak in that matter. That's where we are.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Rep, 15 Jesse Road, Chelmsford. Before we start, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that our, our town attorney, Mr. Haverdy, step down from the, the position of, of sitting, with the appearance of sitting with the ZBA Board, because in, in our discussion, we have him as one of the members of the, the Planning Board and actually supporting them. Both he and Mr. Blansky are actually the, the opposing members to the appeal, and, and were in fact associated to the Planning Board itself. And because they, he advised the Planning Board extensively during following and, and during publics hearings, the decision-making process with Mr. Blansky, the, as technical advisor, and Mr. Haverdy as legal counsel, our belief is that there's a conflict of interest that, that at least the appearance of in this case. As well, Mr. Haverdy sat as the chairman of this board, of the ZBA, in 2013 on another project that I was, that I was involved in, and we actually discussed 104 Turnpike as, as far as my recollection goes. So I'd ask that, in addition to that, the authoring of, authoring, authoring of the 2011 Housing Production Plan, the so-called HPP from 2011, he was an author of that, and it makes it very difficult to challenge the Planning Board's decision if in fact one of the members, or the appearance of one of the members is actually sitting with you.
Mr. Haverdy is not a member of the Planning Board. He is legal counsel for the town, and he does represent the town's interests. I believe that that leaves him on one side of any issue or another. His personal beliefs aside, he, he is sworn to be impartial and his, the town is his client. I don't know what to say about this. I would ask legal counsel.
Chairman, can I, can I ask that, please?
You may, yes.
You're absolutely correct. I was not a member of the Planning Board when this project was reviewed. I've never been a member of the Planning Board. I was a member of the Board of Appeals back in 2014, 2015, when the Mill Road Project was before this board. It has absolutely nothing to do with the Turnpike Road Project. I certainly have no recollection of ever discussing the Turnpike Road Project. I don't believe that the B A O D was even in place before I left the Board of Appeals in 2015. So certainly there was no discussion I could have had with regard to any project that would have been contemplated under that particular zoning provision. In this instance, what is before this board is an attempt to take an administrative appeal of a decision of the Planning Board pursuant to General Laws Chapter 48 and General, 48 Section 8 and 48 Section 15. At the initial attempt to appeal this decision, before the decision was even issued, I provided an opinion to the, to the party that attempted to take that appeal, that the, there was no right to appeal under 48 Section 8, plus that appeal was untimely. I specifically noted that any appeal by statute is required to be filed with either the Land Court or the Superior Court. I made very certain to let that applicant know of the timelines that were involved to make sure that they would not miss their right to appeal. There was an attempt two days later to file the appeal once the decision had actually been filed with the town clerk. I sent yet another certified letter explaining why there's no right of appeal under Chapter 48 Section 8 and Chapter 48 Section 15, and yet again noted the right to appeal under Chapter 48 Section 7 to the Land Court or the Superior Court. About two weeks later, on December 22nd, I sent an email to that particular applicant reminding them that the deadline for appealing to the Land Court or the Superior Court was coming up, and letting them know if they wanted to make sure they didn't miss their opportunity to take a proper appeal, that they needed to file at that time. I've done everything that I could throughout this process to make sure that anybody that wanted to take an appeal of the decision of the Planning Board had that opportunity. However, there is zero jurisdiction for this board to hear that appeal. There have been attempts previously by applicants to try to appeal site plan approval decisions under Chapter 48 Section 8 made by a planning board to a local zoning board of appeals. Courts have held that there's no right. As Chapter 48, Section 8 allows appeals to administrative, of decisions of administrative officials, such as a building inspector. Specifically, there's a right to file a request for zoning enforcement with a building inspector. That can certainly be appealed to the Board, to the Board of Appeals. Brian, you may remember 9 North Road, there was an appeal taken under that procedure, which we heard and then declined because we didn't have jurisdiction for a lack of standing. There's always, if there's a town has followed a procedure that creates a position of a zoning administrator, Chapter 48 Section 8 and Chapter 48 Section 15 provide a right of appeal of that decision to the Board of Appeals. What there isn't a right of is when there is a board designated as a special permit granting authority under General Laws Chapter 48 Section 9 to take any appeal of that decision to another local board. Local boards are not local administrative officials. They are local boards with separate independent powers. There is a specific statutory scheme as to how to appeal one of those decisions, who provided the applicant, I'm sorry, provided the applicant for this appeal, the exact route in which they needed to follow. There's really nothing more that I could have done in this instance.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, part of our project here is to show you that the jurisdiction exists in law. We have documentation to follow through with that discussion. As well, there was some discussion just now to my case in point, that there's conflict here, that if a member of the public, in, in this case, someone other than the applicant, so, someone other than Ms. Cole, if they have some, if they try to make an appeal to our town, they must do so within 20 days of a planning board decision. And apparently, our, our attorney believes that when someone else does that, that Ms. Cole should know that information, and, and therefore, that person's appeal falls on Ms. Cole. At 3:48 today, I got an email to my home address email, in, with a rather large letter addressing you, Mr. Chairman, and specifically talking about Ms. Cole. She had no notice, outside of two hours' notice, that there was any issue, and our attorney has just stated that because another person in town had appealed, that Ms. Cole should have known everything about that and received all the letters. The person that's abutting this property received no such letters. And she, in fact, I guess anybody in town should now be beholden to a discussion from one person who had appealed in a prior period. We were told, when the first planning board decision was made, that only in a butter could appeal. So that was the nature of the letter that I received as a town meeting rep, and recently I discovered that the Town of Chelmsford is in a butter.
Letter?
Sorry?
Do you have the letter stating that only in a butter could appeal?
That's the letter that you received from our town attorney today.
You weren't aware of that at the, at the time of the appeal?
I'm sorry?
You were not aware of that at the time of the appeal?
I was not aware of.
That, your statement that only in a butter could appeal?
That was the letter that, that I received as part of the appeal process that our attorney spoke of.
That's not what that letter states. I don't mention the butters in that. I cite the provisions of Chapter 48 Section 8 that says that an aggrieved person may appeal.
An aggrieved person, and there was discussion of a butter?
I do have the letter in front of me, so if you give me a moment, I'll sort this out.
Moreover, Mr. Chairman, the, the application that was submitted for this appeal specifically notes that after conferring with Christine Bowman and Brian Latina, both Precinct 4 reps, they have agreed to be my technical advisors for this appeal. So I think it was more than reasonable to presume that the letters that were submitted to Ms. Bowman were brought to the applicant's attention.
Okay, as far as that goes, whoever is the applicant is an appeal.
You have to state your name.
I'm sorry, Chris Bowman, 3 Julio Street, Precinct 4 rep.
Thank you.
Any, anybody who appeals deserves proper notification in of themselves. So I have, so...
If you're not in a butter, you're not required to be...
Yes, sir, we are butters. The Town of Chelmsford owns a little triangle piece of property there. We discovered in the documentation that the traffic study had, the Town of Chelmsford is in a butter, so as town meeting reps, we're butters and so are you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that is not correct. The Town of Chelmsford, as, as an entity, may be in a butter, that's entitled to notice. I certainly haven't looked at that. But each individual town meeting representative is not in a butter pursuant to Chapter 48 Section 8.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Okay, I think Mr., just a little short thing, I think Mr. Latina's point is that the town government and town officials hold the property in trust for the residents of Chelmsford. So that's, I believe, was Mr. Latina's point. Okay, so I passed out a sheet. In a nutshell, ZBA jurisdiction, a butter appeal. So if we, if we go start with item under the left-hand corner, ZBA rules and regulations, these rules, ZBA is allowed to make rules and regulations under paragraph 12 of 48. Then in section 15, sentence, section 15, Town Council, Mr. Haverdy, was referring to, the beginning of that section talks about an appeal under section 8, which is for the permit granting authority, meaning the ZBA or the zoning administrator, that people can appeal based on that section, but not, but it does not refer to a special permit granting authority. However, if you go to sentence seven in paragraph 15, it starts talking how the ZBA can hold meetings by call of the chairman or as determined by its rules and regulations. And then sentences eight to 10 in particular refer to notices, timeframes, and things of that nature. Sentence 11 states that by two-thirds vote is needed to reverse any order or decision of any administrative official under this chapter or to effect any variance in the application of any ordinance or bylaw. So if this did not refer specifically, did not refer to things other than section 8, there would be no need for this verbiage. Then if we go to mass case law in Maury v. Newton, ZBA, in 2013, the court determined that the rule of last antecedent is appropriate in interpreting statutes. That rule states that words or phrases are, okay, instrumental in interpreting zoning ordinance or bylaw, where words or phrases are applied to these immediately preceding them, not applied to remote phrases. So the first three sentences in section 15 talk specifically about the permit granting authority. Seven through 11 talk about the ZBA chair specifically. So by the rule of antecedent, and going back, that the ZBA meetings are held by call of the chairman or as determined by its rules and regulations. Now it is, if we go to the top of the sheet, near the top of the sheet, the ZBA rules and regulations in section 1 state, "Any property owner or party and interest may petition the Board of Appeals for any of the following reasons." There's five listed, and two that are appropriate here are, one, to appeal the decision of an administrative officer or board of the town as it pertains to the Chelmsford zoning bylaw, Article 195 of the Chelmsford Code, and five, to hear and decide other actions as allowed by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, 40B, 41, or the Town of Chelmsford zoning bylaw, Article 195 of the Chelmsford Code. It's very clear that the ZBA rules and regulations allow in a butter who, who is, meets the definition of party and interest under section 11 of Chapter 48, to appeal to the, to this board for any decision of any board or administrative official concerning the bylaws. Now, section 12 of 48 gives the ZBA the right to make those rules. Paragraph 15, sentences seven through 11 speak specifically about the ZBA calling a hearing or a meeting based upon those rules and regulations. And sentence 11 specifically talks of what is required in order to reverse any order or decision of any administrative official concerning the bylaws. So given all these things together, the ZBA has jurisdiction under the ZBA Rules and Regulations, Section 1, to hear the appeal of Ms. Tracy Cole.
Can I ask you a question? Based on what you were just saying over here?
I'm sorry.
Does all, do the statements that you're making hinge on having in a butter making the appeal? Is that...
Yes.
And then does that hinge on the fact that the town meeting reps are holding, is that...
No, no. The, the, the butter is making the appeal, and in discussions with the butter...
The butter being Tracy Cole?
She, Ms. Cole...
The butter being the Town of Chelmsford.
She said...
No, they're...
No, it's the applicant.
Ms. Cole is the butter here. She noted that she required help in expressing how these bylaws were, were not complied with. Now she has a statement that she would like to read to the board to tell you exactly how she come to that, to that point, and how she came to ask Brian and myself to be her technical advisors. Okay? So, so 12 and 15 say, and section 1 say that, that the butter, Ms. Cole, can bring the decision of any board before the ZBA for an appeal. Now, in section, section 8 specifically, as you know, refers to the permit granting authority, which applies to the ZBA and to the zoning administrator. Section 9 addresses special permits. The only thing that section 9 says as far as appealing the Planning Board is, is failure to render decision within a lot of timeframe automatically grants a special permit, and then the applicant either must file with the town clerk or may file in land court or, excuse me, or Superior Court within 20 days under section 17. So this is the only reference under the provision dealing with special permits concerning going to land court under section 17, and it's not a requirement. They may go to court. Then if we look at section 17 itself, section 17 states that decision... decisions of the, not only permit granting authority, but special permit granting authority may be appealed under Section seventeen. It's not an exclusive requirement. It says may be appealed. And many of the, many of the case laws concerning Section seventeen, going to land court or Superior Court, the court states that the person is appealing under Provision seventeen, which they may appeal. There is no requirement that the only thing that an butter can do in order to appeal a planning board decision is to go to land court or Superior Court, especially when there's a ZBA rule that says that a butter can appeal to the ZBA for any decision of a board concerning the bylaws.
Mr. Haverty?
May I respond?
Yeah.
Thank you. There's a lot to unpack there. First of all, I want to address the, the discussion with regards to Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the special permits that specifically deals only with the procedure for establishing a constructive grant because the board failed to act. The special permit granting authority failed to act. And in order to do that, you actually have to file, file a notice of constructive approval with the town clerk, okay? And then you also have to provide certified notice to butters to let them know that they have a twenty-day appeal right to land court or Superior Court under forty-eight, Section seventeen. And if no appeal is filed, you can go to the town clerk and you can get a certificate of constructive approval. That has absolutely no bearing on what the appeal process is if the board actually acts with, acts within the allotted time. Chapter forty-eight, seventeen is the only venue to appeal a denial or approval of, of a special permit. Chapter forty-eight, Section fifteen specifically references appeals pursuant to Chapter forty-eight, Section eight. So that is what the board needs to focus on. And if you take a look at my letter, it specifically states, "An appeal to the permit granting authority may be taken by any person aggrieved by reason of his inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from any administrative officer under the provisions of this chapter or by any person aggrieved by an order or decision of the inspector of buildings or other administrative official in violation of any provision of this chapter or any ordinance or bylaw adopted thereunder." The issuance of a special permit by a special permit granting authority, be it the Board of Appeals or be it the planning board, there is no right of appeal under Chapter forty-eight, Section eight of that decision. And you have no more authority to sit here and determine whether or not the decision of the planning board was appropriate than the planning board would have to sit and determine of a special permit that you granted was appropriate. With regard to the, the bylaw and the powers of the Board of Appeals, that's Section one ninety-five dash one oh-two. Powers, the Board of Appeals shall have and exercise all the powers granted to it by MGL, Chapter forty-eight, forty-b, and forty-one in this chapter. The board's powers are as follows. To hear and decide applications for special permit. Unless otherwise specified herein, the Board of Appeal shall serve as the special permit granting authority to act in all matters in accordance with the provisions of Section one ninety-five, one oh-three, or as otherwise specified. Clearly not applicable, and in fact, the board wasn't the special permit granting authority under this particular application. Two, to hear and decide appeals or petitions for variances from the terms of this chapter with respect, respect to particular land or structures as set forth in MGL, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Also not applicable. Three, to hear and decide appeals taken by any person aggrieved by reason of his or her inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from any administrative officer under the provisions of MGL, Chapter forty-eight, Sections eight and fifteen. That's what the applicants are arguing, is applicable, but clearly from its express definition. Inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action from any administrative officer under the provisions of GL, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight and fifteen. That is not the situation we're looking at here. Finally, to hear and decide comprehensive permits for construction of lower, moderate, and income housing by a public agency or limited dividend or nonprofit corporation as set forth in MGL, Chapter forty-b, Sections twenty to twenty-three. That's it. That is the entirety of the board's powers to hear applications. I would note that there's a land court case that was not directly on point. This actually had to do with the ability of a zoning board of appeals to hear an application under Chapter forty-eight, Section eight. And Judge Sands in Jensen versus Norwood Farm Trust made a determination that under Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, a zoning board of appeals was not an administrative official. I think that's equally applicable here. The planning board is not an administrative official under Chapter forty-eight, Section eight. The representative for the applicant hasn't recited a single case in which an appeal was allowed to move forward under Chapter forty-eight, Section eight to a local board of appeals of a special permit granted by a planning board. I've looked hard, I could not find any. I'd be happy to reconsider my position on this if I was provided any information that suggests otherwise. But from everything I've found, that's just not something that's allowed.
And I respectfully disagree with Town Council because forty-eight gives the zoning board the authorization to devise specific rules and regulations. Those rules and regulations do state that a butter can make an appeal for any of the following reasons, which include an administrative order officer or board of the town as it pertains to the Chelmsford zoning bylaws. And that's the, excuse me, and that's the point.
Which provision of the bylaw is that? Where, where did you find that in Mass. General Law?
If you, if you, excuse me. If you go to the first two columns that I passed out to you.
I'd like to see it in the zoning.
I want to see it.
Specific. You know what page I was in, ma'am?
Zoning bylaws?
This is the zoning bylaws for the Chelmsford.
When is she quoting?
Okay, so, excuse me, I thought I had a copy of the ZBA rules and regulations in here, but I don't because I took the quote exactly from what was available on the town website for the ZBA rules and regulations. Do you have a copy of that?
That's the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Did you get it from the Town of Chelmsford zoning bylaw?
I think, I think what she's referring to.
Yes, no, 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 that, I'm sorry. It's from the ZBA rules and regulations. So are you looking to see in forty-eight where it says the ZBA can make rules?
I think forty-eight is general law. We're in Chapter one ninety-five of the Chelmsford.
I don't think there's any dispute that the Board of Appeals can make rules and regulations for itself under Chapter forty-eight.
So, I'm getting too bound up in this.
What it cannot do is actually create jurisdiction for itself through those rules and regulations.
Based on my understanding, we do not have any right to hear an appeal of an action created by the planning board. Somewhere where that's in conflict, I would like to see that.
Go under the webpage for the Board of Appeals.
That is the way, yeah.
So if you look at Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals Regulations Governing Variances, Special Permits, and Administrative Appeals, adopted seven twenty-two thousand, revised four-ten-two thousand and three, for which there is a link on the Town Zoning Board of Appeals webpage. Number one, general, any property owner or party in interest may petition the Board of Appeals for any of the following reasons. One, to appeal the decision of administrative officer or board of the town as it pertains to the Chelmsford zoning bylaw or Article one ninety-five of the Chelmsford Code. So again, this is, it relates to the zoning bylaw.
See, see, your copy there is Mass. General Law, forty-eight.
So if you look down under.
Surely not our additional information.
I think he just quoted exactly what you have written from what he's looking at.
I think, I think Colleen's bringing it up onto the screen right now. Chris, she's bringing it up right there, so if you want to refer to that. It's right there at the top.
Right at the top?
Yep. On the number one, general, number one, is that what you're referring to, Chris?
Yes, thank you. So my point, my point is, is that forty-eight gives the ZBA authorization to establish rules and regulations. Those rules and regulations allow in a butter, who is a party of interest under the definition of Section eleven of forty-eight, to appeal to the ZBA for any decision of administrative officer or board of the town. It's not limiting, or board of the town, as it pertains to the zoning bylaws, Article one ninety-five of the Chelmsford Code, meaning that it can't be for any decision. It has to be a decision relating to the zoning bylaws. If it doesn't relate to the zoning bylaws, then it doesn't go to the ZBA. That, that's part of the whole point. Then within Section fifteen, even though the beginning of that section does say, does talk about Section eight, it goes further after the third sentence. So, so yes, Town Council is correct when he says, Section fifteen says that under Section eight, which is the permit granting authority, either ZBA or the zoning administrator, not the special permit granting authority, which would be planning board, can, can appeal. Okay, any appeal under Section eight to a permit granting authority, PGA, shall be taken within thirty days of the date of the order decision which is it appealed. And then talks about, and that is consistent, petitioner shall file notice of appeal specifying the grounds thereof with the city or town clerk, and a copy of said notice, including date and time of filing, certified by the town clerk, shall be filed forthwith with the petitioner, with the officer or board whose order or decision is being appealed and to, and to the permit granting authority, specifying the notice grounds for each appeal. Such officer or board shall forthwith transmit to the Board of Appeals or zoning administrator, excuse me, all documents and papers constituting the record of the case in which the appeal is taken. Okay, and then it goes on talking about specific days, what's required, the application, how to file. They don't make it easy. Okay, and then finally we get to Sentence seven. Meetings of the board shall be held at the call of the chairman or when called in such other manner as the board shall determine in its rules. Rules. The Board of Appeal shall hold a hearing on any appeal, application, or petition within sixty-five days from the receipt of notice by the Board of such appeal, application, or petition. The board shall cause notice of such hearing to be published and sent to parties in interest as provided in Section eleven. Section eleven defines who comes under the definition of parties and interests, and that includes property owner, a butter, a butter within three hundred feet, a butter directly across from a street or a way. So it's very specific. Okay, the chairman, or in his absence, the acting chairman, may administer oaths, summon witnesses, and call for the production of papers. The concurring vote of all members of the Board of Appeals consisting of three members and a concurring vote of four members of a board consisting of five members shall be necessary to verse, reverse any order or decision of any administrative official under this chapter or to effect any variance in the application of any ordinance or bylaw. So, part of the point that I'm trying to make here is that forty-eight allows the ZBA to make rules and regulations. The board can call a meeting based on those rules and regulations. And the rules and regulations of this town allow in a butter to make an appeal of a decision of any board in this town as long as it pertains to the zoning bylaws. And that, if that is done, then the Z, it is required two-thirds vote of, of the ZBA board in order to reverse any order or decision. Now the board, the planning board consists of administrative officials per the town charter. They are considered administrative officials, town officials, they're elected officials as well. So that's part of the whole point. Now, the other thing, the, the other thing concerns Provision seventeen. Now Provision seventeen talks about, as Town Council said, any person aggrieved by a decision of the Board of Appeals or any special granting authority or by the failure of the Board of Appeals to take final action concerning any appeal, application, or petition within the required time, or by the failure of any special permit granting authority to take final action concerning application for a special permit within the required time, whether or not previously a party to the proceeding or any municipal officer or board may appeal to land court department, the Superior Court Department in which the land concerned is situated. And then if we skip down a little ways, it picks up with, "If said appeal is made to said division of District Court Department, any party, any party shall have the right to file a claim for trial of said appeal in the Superior Court Department within twenty-five days after service on the appeal is completed, subject to such rules as a Supreme Judicial Court may prescribe. Notice of the action with a copy of the complaint shall be given to such city or town clerk so as to, to be received within such twenty days. And there shall be attached to the complaint a copy of the decision appealed from, hearing, date, filing thereof, certified by the city or town clerk, where the decision is filed."
There's a, there's a bit of information there, maybe we can try to digest that.
The specific, I'm sorry.
That's a bit of information, maybe we can try to digest that a little before we move ahead.
Right, so my, the, okay, so the thrust of this is that for appeals concerning the special permit granting authority, that anyone who is aggrieved, as defined under Provision eleven, may appeal to the land court or Superior Court. They're not required to appeal only to the land court or Superior Court. That is a method, it is not the exclusive method allowed.
I mean, the way I read that is that you may appeal the decision. You don't have to appeal the decision, not that you may appeal to those board or that court.
No, it's one thing to choose to appeal, but what the statute is saying is you may appeal in this method to the court, meaning it's not restricted to that one method because otherwise it would say, "Shall appeal" to the land court.
No, because you're not required to appeal, it's different if you don't want to, you may appeal.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. The statute in the wording defines whether it's an option for that individual or whether it's a requirement or mandatory by that individual. It's not mandatory.
Okay, I, I think we're getting a little, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
It's not semantical, but it, I, I think you both have a valid point. My concern is. My concern is ZBA rules and regulations, one, that any property owner, if, as I read that on the board there, includes or board of the town.
So, so Mr. Chairman, that may have been some sloppy adoption back in two thousand, two thousand and three, however, the Board of Appeals cannot accord to itself jurisdiction it does not otherwise have. If the town of Chelmsford wants the Board of Appeals to have jurisdiction over special permits that are granted by the planning board, they have to actually, and I'm not sure they would even be allowed to, under forty-eight, section seventeen.
But they would have to specifically.
But if that was a possibility, it would have to be a warrant article, it would have to get a two-thirds vote from town meeting, and, and then it would.
Pass the AGs.
It would have to get through the AG and have to get approved by the AG, which almost certainly would reject it because chapter forty-eight, seventeen is the only exclusive method for appealing special permits. There have been, over the years, numerous appeals of special permits that have been tossed out of court because they were filed a day late, two days late, under that twenty-day appeal period. If there was an alternative route to appeal to a Board of Appeals within thirty days under chapter forty-eight, section eight, applicants would take it. Correct. There is no other appeal, there are no reported cases in which a, in a butter was, or an applicant was allowed to appeal a special permit approval or denial to the Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Rather than appealing through chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. If you look at section fifteen of chapter forty-eight, it has one, two, three, four, five paragraphs. The first two paragraphs deal with jurisdiction. The next three paragraphs deal with procedure. Once the board actually has jurisdiction over an application, how does it have to treat it? The first section deals with chapter forty-eight, section eight, which would be the applicable provision if there was a right to appeal. The second section deals with appeals of a decision of a zoning administrator. Chelmsford, there's a provision under chapter forty-eight that allows a municipality to create the position of a zoning administrator. It's essentially a local official that is a step below the Board of Appeals, so that anything that comes in, the zoning administrator can actually act in a manner similar to the Board of Appeals on a lot of issues, but those decisions are subject to ratification or appeal to the full Board of Appeals. It's completely inapplicable. Anything that the applicant is relying upon with regard to that section has nothing to do with Chelmsford because we do not have a zoning administrator.
And, if I may, a zoning administrator is also defined as a building inspector.
Correct.
So.
In this case, that applies.
And, and again, I respectfully.
Excuse me, excuse me, I, I may not be correct because I'm not a lawyer, I'm a zoning enforcement officer, I'm not a zoning administrator. Two completely different things.
I'm just saying what forty-eight does define in a zoning administrator.
Chapter forty-eight, section thirteen, a zoning ordinance or bylaw may authorize the appointment of a zoning administrator, who unless otherwise provided by charter, shall be appointed by the Board of Appeals, subject to confirmation by the City Council or Board of Selectmen, to serve at the pleasure of the Board of Appeals pursuant to such qualifications as may be established by the City Council or the Board of Selectmen. Chelmsford has not undertaken that process.
And zoning.
So, so anything in chapter forty-eight, section fifteen, discussing zoning administrators and, and appeal processes from that is completely inapplicable.
We have a zoning enforcement officer.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I disrespectfully disagree with, with Town Council. Now, the ZBA rules and regulations were passed in two thousand and three, those are the ones that are on the books and on the town website. Respectfully, Mr. Haverty was on this board a number of years ago, ZBA, and was ZBA chair. So if those rules were inconsistent with forty-eight, then he could have and had the opportunity to change it at that time, but did not. In addition to that, there is no case law where a judge has specifically stated that the only avenue that a butter has to an appeal, a planning board decision, is through provision seventeen and must go to Land Court or Superior Court. There is nothing that says that. Now, again.
For better legal minds than mine, what I'm going to suggest is we take a motion, whether to take this up or not, we'll have a vote on it, and if it is not to anyone's liking, then we will continue.
Before you take that motion, will you allow the abutter to at least read her prepared statement to this board?
I, I am comfortable with that, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, much, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. For the record, I have never received.
Could I have your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Tracy Cole, and I live at ninety-seven Turnpike Road.
Thank you.
I have never received any letters, emails, phone calls, or anything saying that this appeal would not have been accepted, that it was, that you didn't have the jurisdiction, or, I've never been informed of that, just for the record.
I, I appreciate that, I'm not sure there's a mechanism to do that.
Yeah, she's got representatives.
If she's an abutter, the original application would have had a green card, correct?
No, we don't do that, the only one that does that is.
Any board doesn't have to do that?
Yeah, but we do do certificates of mailing, and yes, but.
Mm-hmm.
But she's talking about the appeal. If she has representation, and they are filing things, the communication would have been through those two.
I filed the appeal. Anyway, when we, the abutters, were first notified of the B A O D overlay, these commercial exclusion zones were described as transitional and a buffer zone between the single-family homes and the larger industrial areas to be built in accordance with the B A O D. There was never any mention of multifamily residential buildings being built to industrial standards. I, like most other residents, assumed that multi-family housing would be built to multifamily standards, which would be consistent with a transitional and being a buffer zone. After looking at the plans presented to the initial planning board meeting, I found this wasn't going to be the case. During the first public meeting, I along with other abutters attending, as well as other surrounding residents, had voiced their concerns of the project being too big for the area, and the added traffic to the side road we live on, the compatibility with the surrounding area, and requested the project just be reduced. At the, at, at the close of the first meeting, the developer agreed to have a meeting with the abutters to hear their concerns. At that meeting, the abutters again expressed the same concerns of density, traffic, and nonconformity of the project to the surrounding area. Every subsequent public meeting that followed, through either emails sent or in person, the abutters and other residents repeatedly maintained the same concerns. The planning board chair had also repeatedly, and at least once aggressively, asked the developer to reduce the density of the project, which, which made me feel hopeful that the project, if nothing else, would be reduced to a more compatible size to the area. This was sternly refused by the developer. The developer repeatedly claimed that they were building to a by right standard, but the B A O D, one ninety-five, one forty-five, user regulation C one, it clearly states that multifamily residential requires a special permit and is not by right. This is also stated in the C E I O D, one ninety-five, one eleven, D four and six. During the break in one of the public meetings, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Evan Bolansky and Selectman Ken LaFave in the hallway, and expressed in part my concern of the size that, my concern of the size of the project. I mentioned that, in my opinion, I thought this was all about greed and getting as much as they could out of the project, and with no concern for what's best for the town or the abutters. Mr. Bolansky's response to that comment was that building a smaller scale, building to a smaller scale would not be economically feasible, and if that were the case, he would not have brought this developer on board. This comment confused me because there are other projects in town who have built more conforming standards and have obviously been profitable. In conclusion, after attending all the meetings and feeling like my concerns, along with many others, were not addressed, such as, but not limited to, Article twenty-four, one ninety-five, one forty-three, which is purpose of intent, I believe, I read the B A O D, the C E I O D, the inclusionary housing by law, the housing production plan, and the master plan to get better acquainted with the bylaws. After consulting with Christine Bowman and Brian Latina, both precinct four reps, about some of my questions and concerns in the bylaws, they have agreed to be my technical advisors. Together, we believe this project is not in compliance with several sections in the bylaws. And after that, I would defer to them for the, just the details and the technicalities of it. Christine has done extensive research.
Thank you. So, again, I think we decide whether we have jurisdiction over this matter, which we'll take a vote for the administrative appeal, if someone like them make a motion, whether in favor or against hearing the administrative appeal.
Make a motion against hearing the appeal?
Do I have a second? Second by Mark, all in favor? And Jerry is not, and Steve is not, so we have a three to two, four to, oh, so we have six, so who's not voting? Jerry is not voting. So we have a four, two, one majority.
I mean, I can't vote tonight, is that what you mean?
No, there's only five members.
There's five on the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think what would be a better motion would be to vote to reject the appeal for lack of jurisdiction.
I'll amend my motion.
Excuse me, before you consider that, I would challenge Town Council on that. Town Council has a conflict of interest in his advice to the planning board, which we oppose. So, I think that that particular motion is, is premature at this time, and, and we do request to continue on this. And quite honestly, it should continue based on the ZBA rules and the authority given the ZBA in its rules in forty-eight.
Well, I think you're certainly allowed to appeal our decision, you have every right to do that, and there are legal means to do that. I personally have failed to see the conflict with Mr. Haverty doing his job as best I think he can.
Three hundred.
So at, at that point, I would listen to the motion as you would like to amend it and vote again.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, our concern about conflict of interest is clear. I'm concerned that the precedence for allowing the, the continuing discussion could cause harm to the town and to our, our person that's abutting this property. As well, we did advise at the beginning of this that there were concerns on, with that regard, as well.
I do appreciate your concerns, and again, there are legal remedies if you feel that's the case.
As well, the reason, part of the reason why the abutter came to this board is because Land Court is horrifically expensive. It requires lawyers, it requires a lot of money. This meeting cost almost five hundred dollars for Ms. Cole, who lives simply across the street from this property, which is arguably, you'd argue that it's not a lot of money, but she, she is, she is coming to our town, challenging our bylaws because there were, I've counted now, six mistakes made. One of them admitted in one of the planning board meetings the other night, sixty-eight point eleven, on the, on the recording, where the chairman of the board said that there's some language that they made a mistake in and they have to fix it regarding RM not being allowed, in other words, multifamily not being allowed in an IA district. Oops, we made a mistake, admitted, it's on the record, and we're not able to have that discussion with you. This lady spent five hundred dollars, she did not go to Land Court because it's very expensive, and I'm frankly concerned that this board is only for a developer to come and be aggrieved, and not a resident who is directly across the street from a property with fourteen floors of living space, in a property across the street that is a single-family house, surrounded by single-family all along Turnpike Road. One hundred and sixty-eight units in that property that the planning board has done, has at least six mistakes in it, by our count, and to find a hundred and sixty-eight living units across the street requires almost all of Turnpike, and I believe most of Warren, probably my neighborhood over in Jesse and Nancy as well. It's a huge project.
I, I do understand that. I, I think that we cannot help you because we do not have jurisdiction. I, I don't know any other way to explain it. I don't, I don't disagree with your concerns, it's a very large development. I can promise you, this board is not pro-development, they're looking to do what's best for the town. You're welcome to attend every single meeting, you'll find that we're not sitting here rubber-stamping things just for developers, we have a extensive process. Most of our approvals for developments are forty Bs, which really tie our hands. We, we don't have a lot of ammunition, we're getting there, and for better or worse, Turnpike is going to help that, we'll have more affordable housing to do that, so it's, it's a double-edged sword.
To be clear, this is commercial housing, this, and that was one of our arguments. The twenty-eleven HPP plan had this property established as a one hundred and twenty-unit affordable housing project, so when, when that project and, and when our, when our town attorney was chairman of the board and, and that discussion was brought up, there's records of that, that property had one hundred and twenty units on it. This, this project that came up has one hundred and sixty-eight units, and it is, it is not being established under forty B, it is not necessarily an affordable housing project. So these are the issues that we would like to bring to you. If, if you decide we do not, you do not have jurisdiction, nothing lost except Ms. Cole's five hundred dollars.
I, I don't really know what you spent that on, I'm.
The appeal, the, the ZBA appeal is a fee, and it requires over a hundred and some odd dollars for mailings to, to give notice. So, so every ZBA appeal that comes to you is costing that person standing in front of you about five hundred dollars, and I think, I think our town attorney and, and our, our financial people could tell you that.
I really don't know the cost of filing a appeal.
But the point, the point being that we, Ms. Cole, will not be allowed to come to the ZBA because someone, usually have two attorneys, I'm not an attorney, I'm a regular person, I sat in the, the town meeting, I happened to vote against this one twenty-nine area, and it's did every precinct four rep. We were regular people, and we did not understand this was a massive housing project as a starting point. The cost to the town, so far there's two hundred units on forty, on, on Turnpike Road, this particular project has eleven hundred additional cars on a road that's forty-four percent more than they have today. This project intersects with Mill Road, where there's an accident.
We're getting into the details I'd like to avoid.
Well, the point, the point is that we can't tell you this because if you close this, this hearing, and you assume that one lawyer, judge and jury in this case, and we've challenged his reason for being here, we've challenged the fact that he wrote some of these documents, if you, if you agree and let him be the, the attorney, single attorney, judge and jury, and you, you require her to step aside, I'm sorry, but as a resident, I'm very concerned at what I'm hearing.
I am, this is just, this is not on my only information.
And, and, and I, I didn't want to talk about it, but the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, I'll, I'll read the last sentence if, if I might. Okay? "We have the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." That's exactly what Ms. Cole is doing in this, in this meeting. You're determining that you do not have jurisdiction based on one attorney, I would settle this, I would, I would continue it, doesn't hurt you, we come back, and you have a document from the Attorney General agreeing with our Town Council. That's all I'm suggesting.
I, I will defer to the board, if, if you feel that there is any doubt that we do have jurisdiction, I am, I am open to, to that, I, I think that.
You can do a straw poll, Brian, if you'd like to, a straw poll as to who thinks they have jurisdiction to hear this. Or you can just take a, a down.
I guess the simple question is, do we have jurisdiction, and what would the flavor of the board be if it's a straw poll? I'd be interested in Jerry's input as well, I don't know.
I agree, I would like to see it go up higher, to see, get an opinion as to whether we do have jurisdiction. I don't see why not.
Mark, is there?
I, I've heard nothing that suggests we do have jurisdiction over this.
Seems like we could, but I doubt it.
Is there harm in extending this as a continuance? Is there a downside?
Where I'm at, why I was prepared not to vote yes, is that I'm where Charlie is, somewhere in that realm, where I don't believe it has. somewhere in that realm, where I don't believe it has been proved that we do not have jurisdiction. I can't say that I feel like we do, but I feel like-
There's doubt.
There's doubt that we, I, I don't doubt Paul's motives. That's been kind of put out there. I don't want to come off saying that I think he's got an alternative going, but I feel like I don't see the downside to saying, okay, well, they're trying to argue a point. It seems like there's clearly a difference of opinion of how the law is being interpreted. I am nowhere close to being a lawyer, but I, I don't see the downside to-
Well, I do want to say one thing. I did hear Paul reference case law-
And nobody else did.
That suggests that we don't have it. Okay?
And Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any process in which a board can request an advisory opinion from the Attorney General's office-
I wasn't planning on requesting. I would leave it open to hear testimony at a later date.
Well, who are you getting an opinion from?
Where is that information going to come from?
It needs, not just any attorney.
From an Attorney General, I think was what Brian had said.
Or, or an independent attorney.
That's who I would go. I'd ask the state, do we agree? Don't we agree? You may say, hire a lawyer, right? We'll talk to Ms. Cole about hiring a lawyer.
Well-
They want to leave it open.
So, so Mr. Chairman, if that is what the board wants to do, to allow the applicant to go out and discuss the situation with an attorney, I'm perfectly happy to say that that's fine. There is, I'm one hundred percent certain, in my legal opinion, that there is no right to file an appeal of a special permit pursuant to Chapter forty-eight, Section eight, and fifty. So if they can, if they can go out and discuss this with an attorney and bring contrary information, I'm more than happy to review it and hear it. But through my research, I have not found a single case anywhere in the Commonwealth where this was something that was allowed to occur.
Julie noted.
My understanding is that the only risk is that they will go off and waste their time and potentially their money to come up with nothing.
Here's a, for instance, though, who is going to do the so-called legal peer review? They cannot hire somebody because they're protecting their interests. We cannot hire somebody protecting our interests. So who is the qualified person to make this call?
It has to be an independent attorney that has no relationship with the town.
Would Melissa like to speak?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we're going to open the public hearing to anybody else except applicants to discuss this issue. The developer would like an opportunity to speak to this. So if the board is going to take an alternative motion to the motion they've already taken and closed the hearing, they, I think, and I defer to town council, they would have to take a motion and get a majority vote to reconsider the motion that they've already taken and moved on. And then after that, if they're going to take a motion for reconsideration, I would request that the applicant be given an opportunity to speak on this issue, if any other matter's going to be heard outside the applicant.
I think that's unfair.
And again, I defer to council, but I think we're procedurally out of whack here. You already took a vote on the motion to move. You already had a majority motion four to one. So the next motion to the board, if they wanted to reconsider, would be a motion to reconsider, which you need a supermajority to do so. And then I would ask that other people other than the applicant be allowed to speak.
So again, Mr. Chairman, the developer's trying to tell the town what to do and how to do it. It's not up to the developer to do that. It's up to you, ZBA chair.
The developer certainly has a right to be heard, just as you do.
I'm not contesting that point, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cole has not had her right to be heard. You did not allow her to give the testimony to describe why she believes-
Let her read her letter in, sir. And I told you earlier that I was going to determine the jurisdiction before we moved into the pluses and minuses of the application.
Agreed, understood.
I believe what I did was make a mistake by allowing her to read that in, and then I've opened the door to other applicants, to the applicant and others to speak as well, which I should not have done, but I have done.
Okay, in, in parting, Mr. Chairman?
Let's see, just hold on one minute.
Sure.
So the, the motion that the board heard and voted on was to not to accept the application. I do think it is a good idea for the board to reconsider that motion and open it back up to take a motion that specifically discusses jurisdiction, because that is what you were talking about.
I think that would be a good idea, then. I would have a motion to reconsider the voted motion.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote.
I second it.
I don't think you can, Jerry.
You can.
Oh, sorry.
Second to reconsider?
No second, motion carries.
No second.
Motion carries.
So the motion has carried.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, then I would ask this board to give serious thought to its ZBA rules, because those rules are extremely misleading, even though the ZBA has been given authority under forty A, Provision twelve, to establish those rules. And it is unfair to the residents of this town to have them standing on the town website as viable rules and regulations under which the ZBA functions.
I appreciate that, and I agree with you, that it should not be at all ambiguous.
Okay, and it's because of that that I feel, regardless of what just went on here, that, that you, the ZBA as a whole, should reconsider under that aspect, under the ZBA rules, having them on the town website. And just reading the words says that an abutter can appeal a decision by any board in this town that concerns the zoning bylaws. So therefore, I will leave that with you. It's in your hands fully and completely, and that's where we stand as far as jurisdiction, and that's why the appeal was brought to this board. There are a lot of things that were not done right on this project, which we feel the ZBA should have an opportunity to hear. But until you get to the point where you believe you have that jurisdiction, even though the rule, your own rules say that you do, then it's, it's not going to happen, but it should. So I thank you very much for being patient. I thank you very much for listening and considering what we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there is one aspect of the application that requested relief that is still pending, that the board does need to make a determination on. The applicant did request a waiver of the application fee. So this board should consider that and make a determination.
I would accept a motion to that effect. I think they came here with good intent. I don't think that they, they were clear on the process, and it's been a bit of a learning experience for myself. This has never come before us. I would accept a motion to rescind the fee.
It's just the application fee.
Just the application fee.
The cost for the mailing.
The mailing would stay.
I'll make a motion to-
Mark has made that motion. Steve seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ms. Cole, we are, we are going to refund your application fee. Our next hearing is Thomas Gonzalez, one thirty-two Tinsborough Road. We have a request to continue to March first, two thousand and eighteen. I'll accept a motion to continue that at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to continue on one thirty-two Tinsborough Road to our next meeting on March first.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to give the room a moment to clear out. Give one of those cups, Jerry.
I second that motion.
Brian, did you already continue Bruce, Bruce Clark?
Yes, he was continued, Mr. Houseler.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. Point of order, like there, fifty-four Parker Road is withdrawn.
That's correct. That is, there's no longer an application.
The Tinsborough.
Think, we're now on one thirty-two Tinsborough, and that was asked to continue. Now we're up to Pam Vega, fifty-four Parker, which has been withdrawn. And then we have a continue for Bruce Clark, eleven Sharon Ave, which I think we need to read in.
Okay, so where are we? At sixty-one?
We're at eleven Sharon.
Eleven Sharon.
So we have a, a variance for eleven Sharon Ave. Bruce Clark was asking to continue to March first, two thousand and eighteen. Take a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept a withdrawal, not withdrawal, continuance.
Continuance, yeah. By Charlie. Second by Steve. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Continue to March first. Now we're up to sixty-one Carlisle Street, application for a comprehensive permit.
I shall be stepping down, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie leaving?
Mr. Borges will be stepping out, as he accused himself from this matter.
Charlie, you returning? You're going to return now?
No, I'm going to return.
Colleen, you know that the URLs are not working on this thing?
Yeah, I'm going to pull them up over here.
It happened once before, and so I'm, I've been putting them on a, on drive. So we can at least see them. Is it working now?
Some work, some don't.
Yeah.
Okay, that's working.
This one works.
But I do have them all to put up on the screen for you.
I'm out of my league with this.
They're my last ones.
Oh, I do have this, so.
So you can close down all the, I was highlighting it as you were reading it, helping. Oh, crap. So, did you have anything new to present, or would you just like-
No, I didn't have anything new. Nope.
Would you like me to just pull up the site plan, then?
Sure. Thank you. William Harvey, on behalf of the Thomas Marshall Estates Development.
Okay, so we have a certificate, certificate of decision for sixty-one Carlisle Street.
No, no, no. Where'd you go? There was nothing in that file. I think that might have been the-
Sixty-one Carlisle. Oh, this was the original special permit for the, I think it was this-
That's the conversion. It's the wrong file, and there were no-
There was nothing in there.
So there's no new information?
Yeah, so there was nothing standing up beside of Bruce's thing.
So there's two files for sixty-one.
Yeah, one's the conversion. I'll just keep it up. Like on email.
This is a brand-new one, right?
Okay.
This is the next one.
This is our actual sixty-one Carlisle.
No, there's nothing in there.
Nothing in there. It'll be-
If it was standing straight up, it would have been needed to be read. That's why I asked, because there was nothing new in this file. All right, let's go back to.
Steph Suzeth? Yeah. You didn't see that letter?
Twice. I got it twice.
Is that from John?
Yeah.
He's stuck next door, so he might have sent something.
He emailed at four thirty to the-
I didn't check my emails since four thirty. But I will read this into the record.
Okay.
Dear Chairman Reedy and members of the Board of Appeals, please find a letter attached outlining the reasons why we opposed to the proposed forty B LIP development at sixty-one Carlisle Street. Since this letter was written, I would also like to bring a matter to your attention involving a recent painting of two sides of the existing barn. It is interesting that the proponent of this project appeared before the Board of Selectment a few months ago and told everyone he had demonstrated a record of being a responsible owner of properties with historical significance here in Chelmsford. Sometime during late November two thousand and seventeen, the current owner of sixty-one Carlisle Street hired a contractor to paint two sides of an existing barn bright orange. I have listened to numerous complaints from neighbors in East Chelmsford neighborhood. One might ask, why would an experienced rental property owner paint two sides of a barn in a non-traditional, bright orange color during November when the temperature was at or near thirty-two degrees on a building he's seeking to demolish? I believe the only answer is that it was done to aggravate the abutters. That is the intent. It has been successful. We respectfully ask that you do not approve the LIP project for sixty-one Carlisle Street as presented. That is John Souza Junior and Nancy Souza, with no address that I'm seeing here. No address is given.
All right, there's no address. I ask that the letter be stricken from the record.
The address is Carlisle-
It's also complete, it's also completely irrelevant, has no relevance.
I apologize. It is. Eighty-eight Carlisle Street is, is here as an address on a, on the signed version of the letter. So what we really have is a second letter here. Has that been written yet? I don't think I wrote it into the, I think it's been read We have a letter here from John B. Souza Junior of eighty-eight Carlisle Street, Chelmsford, Mass, dated November second, two thousand and seventeen, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, fifty Bill Ricker Road, Chelmsford, Mass. Reason forty B LIP proposal at sixty-one Carlisle Street. Members of the board, we are writing to express our concerns over the proposal submitted to you, seeking a comprehensive permit through the LIP Local Initiative Program to demolish the existing barn structure at sixty-one Carlisle Street and construct a new building containing five one-bedroom residential housing units. We are opposed to the project for the following reasons. This project, as proposed, is completely out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. If you review other properties located along the entire length of Carlisle Street, you will not find any other multifamily apartment complex structures. The vast majority of the properties on Carlisle Street are single-family residence homes. Two, this project does not conform to the current zoning RB single-residence district. Three, the proposed Thomas Marshall Estates development is extremely dense for the site and represents a radical departure from the former longstanding use of this property. For several decades, the Marshall House at sixty-one Carlisle Street has been a single-family home with only one or two vehicles parked at this location. The current proposal dramatically increases the density at this location by converting the existing home into a two-family and constructing five new rental units, resulting in a total of seven residential units at this location. The proposed project includes a parking lot with fourteen spaces. If approved, this project will result in as many as fourteen vehicles attempting to exit, enter, and exit this parking lot daily onto a road with heavy vehicular traffic near a sharp curve while looking directly across the street from a preschool and a public park playground. For all the reasons described above, we urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to reject this project as proposed at sixty-one Carlisle Street, Carlisle Street, to maintain the character of our neighborhood and preserve the quality of life in East Chelmsford. John B. Souza Junior, Nancy S. Souza, eighty-eight Carlisle Street, Chelmsford. I have another letter from Richard Weber, two Marshall Street, Chelmsford, Mass, dated one eleven, two thousand and eighteen. Dear members of the board, over the past month, I have had discussions with an applicant regarding aesthetic concerns of the property, as well as my concerns related to the ensuring the privacy related to the forty B project itself, especially since I am a direct abutter. Based on these discussions, I believe the applicant understands my concerns and will work towards addressing those issues at the appropriate time. Based on this understanding, I do support the forty B project at Carlisle, sixty-one Carlisle Street moving forward. Sincerely, Richard Weber, two Marshall Street, Chelmsford, Those are the letters that I have.
Mr. Chairman-
Just a moment, sir. If you, if you would like to approach the board, we'll open it to public comment when Mr. Harvey has finished his presentation. Do you have further input, Mr. Harvey?
Well, the last time I was here, well, previously, when the first, when this was first opening, first preliminary discussion about this, I did go through the packet that you have. There's nothing additional relative to the packet. There's no additional information. I believe that all the, I did send out an abutters notification. I had one abutter that I had an opportunity to speak with, Mr. Weber, and we had a long discussion, and he's, I think I met all of his concerns, and that's why he wrote the letter. In relative to the first letter that was on record with regards to Mr. Souza, I'm talking about the character of the neighborhood. And when you look at a zoning map, you, there's more than just the zoning that you need to look at. So if you look at the zoning map with regards to this area, it is zoned RB. It's zoned RB, single-family, forty thousand square foot lots. However, if you go to the neighborhood in the surrounding streets, it's not in character with the zoning of that neighborhood. And in speaking with that, not all the area is a single-family- And in speaking with that, not all the area is a single-family houses with 40,000 square feet. It's not like going over to the farms where all the houses conform to the zoning or to the subdivision that was proposed in the late 60s or 70s where everything looks fine and somebody else is coming in and asking for a five-unit 40B development that would be completely out of character. Now, if I went into the farms or some other areas in town and I wanted to build a five-unit apartment building and somebody said it's out of character, I certainly would agree with them. But I do not agree with the previous correspondent that says it's out of character. So with regards to support my argument, if you went onto Rivernack Road, again, that's all zoned RB, single-family, 40,000 square foot. We have Christopher's Towing. It's a commercial business. Tow trucks everywhere, cars everywhere, a lot of trash coming out in the street all the time, cars parked on the side of the street. Marshall Street, we have a daycare on Marshall Street. We also have a large HVAC company that has several vans on the property. And now if we go to Carlisle Street, again, it's not consistent with RB, single-family. We have a commercial business that is located on the side of the old East School Park. The business is the old East School building, but now it's being run as a commercial business.
What is located there, sir?
Excuse me?
What's located at the school?
I believe it's a, I believe it's a nonprofit at this time, an nonprofit educational facility.
On Carlisle?
On Carlisle.
Yeah.
It's on the corner of Carlisle and Bellio. It's the old East School.
Yeah.
Furthermore, if you go up the street, there's a large historical building, a Victorian house, that was converted into, I believe it's two, it's either two or three apartments. And again, across the street, we have a public park, which is off, obviously, it's a, it's an asset to the community, especially with the recent development of the park. So when we're talking about a neighborhood and making this building that would be out of character, I would stress to you that it certainly is not out of character. In fact, rather than proposing a commercial-type structure, which is all these other buildings, this will be residential. The building will look residential, it will not look like an apartment. The exterior of the building, the aesthetics, will be sort of a replica of a barn. And as I said earlier in one of my previous hearings, what's, what's great about this proposal is that there's a building that I built in this town, which is going to completely copycat this. It's the exact same plans, it's the exact same exterior, other than, I did talk to one of my neighbors, they want the outside white, so rather than having a red color, it would be white, that's at 75 North Road. Now that is zoned RB. That's, again, single-family residential. I had conversation with my neighbors when I built that. I eased everybody's concerns. I went so far as putting up a lot more landscaping that was proposed, putting up a fence for one of my neighbors that wasn't proposed on the plan that I did six months later. And that consists of two dwellings on a single lot, which consists of 40,000 square feet. The building that was built is five apartments, and then the old historic house is three apartments. And by doing, by having that project approved, it also allowed me to get the additional financing to renovate the Simeon Spalding House. So since it's been built, it's been about five years now, there's never been any concerns, there's been no concerns with regards to traffic, safety, the police haven't been there. The fire department technically hasn't been there too often. I did have, once, one of the sprinklers broke. Other than that, there's been no problems with the property, or there's been absolutely no letters sent to the building inspector with regards to any concerns with regards to that property. So that whole area is completely single-family residential, as opposed to the property here at Carlisle Street. We do have, it certainly is a mixed-use area, even though it's zoned RB. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. In addition, as opposed to most, most of these projects where the developer only has to provide 20% of housing as affordable units, this is a, unique whereby, this is a project where 40% of the units will be deemed affordable. So if there are other developers that do come before you, and you believe that there should be a need for additional housing, you can always use this as an example, that if somebody says financially it doesn't work, well, sometimes that's an argument they want to state to you, but in reality, it does work. So that was my concerns in my rebuttal to the first letter with regards to the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Seeing that, I think I'll open this up to public comment. If someone would like to speak in favor or against this application, please post pro diem. Give me your name and address, please.
My name is Dan Sullivan, Four Shed Lane. And what I have here is a letter or a petition from a group of the abutting neighbors. Basically, it's Thomas Marshall Estates, 61 Carlisle Street, Chelmsford, Mass. The following Chelmsford residents and abutters are strongly opposed to the comprehensive permit that is being sought by the Thomas Marshall Estate Development LLC through the Town of Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeal. The opposition is based on inadequate density and dimensional controls spelled out in Section C. Analysis of zoning conformity and exceptions wave as son. The required area, A, the required area, 40,000 square feet. The proposed is 16,721 square feet, 23,279 square feet below the required amount, 41.8% of the required amount. B, minimum frontage, required 150 feet, proposed 66 feet, 84 feet below the required, which is 44% of the required. C, minimum width, 150 feet, proposed 117 feet, 33 feet below the required or 78% of the required. D, minimum depth, depth, 150, 150 feet, required, proposed, 100 feet, 50 feet below the required or 66.6% of the required. Minimum front yard, 40 feet, required, proposed 19 feet, 21 feet below the required, which is 47.5% of the required. F, minimum side yard, 25 feet, required, proposed 6.8 feet, 21.3 feet below the required or 62.3% below the required. G, the maximum floor area ration, ration, is .20. The proposed is .20, which is .02 above the required maximum. The opposition is also based on 61 Carlisle Street that was granted a special permit under Section 19513, conversion to a two-family 61 and 61A Carlisle Street on October 26, 2017, being further subdivided, see Exhibit 5, which is part of the package, but that's the actual plan of the land itself. And the total plan of the land is 46,640 square feet, which includes both this proposed Thomas Marshall Estate and the existing home on it as well. The proposed lot for Lot 1 is 29,725 square feet, and I believe that's the existing home. And proposed Lot 2 is lot area of 16,721 square foot. And the area required, I believe, was 40,000 square foot for the lot.
The requirement would be, yes, sir?
Yeah. Note also that 61 Carlisle Street was previously subdivided by prior owners in March 1988, and again on March of 2000, and sold for house lots. Each of those lots were an acre or more, in conformity with the neighborhood.
The two that were broken out?
Yeah. And I have the list of the names and the abutters. I can read them out for you if you'd like.
I think that would be fine. We will take that as testimony in, in writing, but if you'd like to read the names of the abutters...
Yeah, I think I would. The following Chelmsford residents and abutters are strongly opposed to the comprehensive permit that is being sought by the Thomas Marshall Estate Development LLC through the Town of Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeal. The opposition is based on inadequate density and dimensional controls spelled out in Section C. And the names is myself, Four Shed Lane, my wife, Four Shed Lane, Kathleen, a neighbor, Heather Matthews, Six Shed Lane, her husband, Michael Matthews, Six Shed Lane, number Eight Shed Lane, Cynthia Guerin, and James Guerin. Louisa Robert at Ford Thomas William Way, Kyle Robert at Ford Thomas William Way, Dina Stile...
What does he say, Thomas what way?
Thomas William.
Thomas William.
Thomas William? Thank you.
I'll give you a copy of these as well. Dina Stiling at 68 Moore Street, Ann Linehan, One Shed Lane, Rich Gray at Three Shed Lane, Judith Bunker at Two Shed Lane. Number Two Marshall Street, I have a signature as well. Right now, I'm fogging up and I'm not able to read it. Number Seven Marshall, we have the owner there as well for a signature, as well as Brian Linehan on One Shed Lane.
Thank you very much, sir.
This letter also has the Section 5, which is the lot line, and a lot of the objections were within Section 8 of this book.
Thank you. Are we concerned with the parking really not being on the property? Is that a consideration? Or is this property conjoined at this point? There is a proposed property line demising out the proposed unit with the existing unit. Just trying to understand how that works.
The parking's right up there?
Yeah, that's right.
I can blow it up.
Isn't that on the property?
Yep.
Ends right on the property line?
Okay, wait a second. This is really sensitive, because I blew it up.
So what I'm seeing is this is the proposed unit, six and a half feet away from the proposed lot line, but is, is this going to be a subdivided parcel?
I thought this was the property line, that there...
What I'm reading here is just a...
It adds an arrow to the other part.
Proposed property line. Oh, it's running to here.
So that's this, and then it points to another one down. Tell me if that bottom one, I don't know what this is pointing to here.
Ms. Sullivan, would you just walk us through the property lines? There's a little confusion there.
For the record, Brian Malisi with Whitman and Bingham Associates. And if I may, kind of go up to the...
Yeah, please. Maybe you could zoom that a little too.
What we have is the proposed property line, and I tried to kind of leader it up because it gets a little confusing when there's a whole lot of lines here. But the proposed property line would come down, jog over, come down, and then jog back over. And so what it was, an attempt to do is take some of the parking spots that go with the existing house and keep it there. But the whole parking lot is contained within an easement, a driveway parking access easement, and so that everybody would have the rights to pass where you pass over.
Are you looking to have two separate entities as well?
That's a question for the applicant. I don't exactly know how the legal end of things will work, but from the, the engineering end, that's what we plan to fix.
So you would have parking with an easement to enter in perpetuity? And what is the distance to the proposed lot line to the existing property? Yeah, that's up at the, up in the back corner there.
The back corner?
I mean, we're sort of...
71.9 feet here?
To the rear, I'm running from the, from the proposed lot line on the side to the, to the structure itself.
No.
It looks like 10 and 8, it must be. No, 10 and 3. That's where it demises the, the parking lot proper? Yeah, 10 and lot, parking lot, parking space, 3 and 10?
No.
Is the, is where the actual property line would go?
Yep.
So what is the distance from that point to the structure itself?
Two seconds.
Demising this out this way, I think, would create another non-conformity on that property.
Don't make me do it, let me check that.
I don't really understand the whole subdivision plan here. Why, why we're subdividing this?
The reason why I'm asking it to be subdivided is because you allowed Mr. Emanuel to do the same at his property on Littleton Road. It was a historic house on Littleton Road where he was allowed to carve it out and not make that part of his 40B project.
True.
Or if it wasn't, if it wasn't a 40B project, then a large-scale apartment complex with over, I don't know...
That was a 40B.
200 units. Okay, so whether it's a 40B, that's the reason why I did this, is because he's, he's allowed to do it, and therefore, I believed it was a, it's a good concept in his, with regards to keeping it separate. Also, it's a good concept because, number one, it has to do with financing. Number two, there will be a deed restriction with regards to the historic house. I've had numerous meetings with the Historic Commission. The exterior of that historical house will be preserved. And thirdly, is I did talk to the representative from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and went over my idea about doing this without jumping the gun. I wanted to get her support. And she said to me, we have no problem with this because all your brand-new units, the affordable units, are in the brand-new building. So she had no concern about the old building. And again, this is, once again, this is a 40B, and it allows us with regards to the exceptions that are being sought.
Mr. Chair?
I'm not in favor of creating another lot there. You know what's going to happen is you're going to put another 40B on the first lot, so I, I'm not in favor of subdividing this at all.
Well, apparently, no, apparently, you have, no, apparently, you have a negative view on this, because you were...
No, I don't understand this, subdividing this is...
Then why didn't you ask Mr. Emanuel that?
Can I clarify this, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I believe the applicant's referring to the project at 50 Hunt Road?
Yes.
Is that the one you're referring to? The board required that applicant actually to get a separate variance?
I remember hearing that.
For that other lot? And, and the reasoning was because it's unclear under Chapter 40B whether you can simply create that non-conforming lot that is not part of the 40B project. The case law, there's a case out of Lunenburg, actually, that addresses this, and it essentially says you're absolutely allowed to create the lot as part of the 40B process. The question becomes, a lot that is not in the 40B development, what is the legal status of that? And the SJC in that case essentially said, that's not before us. It was not an issue that was briefed at the lower court. So the legality, the status of that lot with the existing structure was left undetermined. I think it's certainly possible under Chapter 40B that it can be created that way. I have done it for applicants in the past. The reason that we required the variance in 50 Hunt Road was just to eliminate the uncertainty.
So the deed, it was also a historical house.
But we're creating a non-conforming...
You did the same thing on 50 Hunt Road, but you did it through a variance? To make sure that that, what was left, was legal?
And I can state...
To clear up the ambiguity.
I can clearly state on record to each board members, and I can look you in the eye, that it would be completely uneconomical whatsoever if I ever wanted to do a 40B with regards to the historical house, completely uneconomical. You'd have to put a sprinkler system in, everything would have to be up to code... Completely uneconomical. You'd have to put a sprinkler system in, everything would have to be up to code. You'd be looking at lead paint in the building. Children certainly couldn't be allowed in there. Wouldn't make any sense. I could guarantee you one hundred percent, there's absolutely no way I'd ever go in there and try and do a forty B.
Put another barn on the other side.
Excuse me?
You could just put a barn on the other side of this house. You don't need setbacks.
I'm telling you right now, I wouldn't do it. It doesn't make any economical sense whatsoever. So...
At any rate, I am not in favor of subdividing this lot to create two nonconforming...
But it's okay for you and your buddies to have one on Fifty Hunt Road, right? You and Chuck Emanuel can put one through, but Billy Harvey can't.
He did it separate.
Right? I can't do it, but somebody else can do it. I'm not going in for two hundred units. I'm doing forty percent affordable. Forty percent. Not twenty. Not twenty. Not one apartment.
I'm not in favor of subdividing this land, sir.
I know you're not in favor of anything I do before you, Mr. Reedy, okay? I do my work one hundred percent perfect. Every project comes out perfect. Talked to people on Plum Street, I just did a duplex. The neighbors love me. This will be perfect, just like all my other properties. And just because you might have some sort of a problem with me about the way I do my projects...
I've never had dealing with you. What problem would I have with you? What do you mean?
Maybe, maybe we should talk to other people that you have an opinion about me, okay?
I do have an opinion about you.
I know you do, and you make it public to people. And you shouldn't even be sitting here listening to any of my projects.
Oh, I disagree.
No, I agree. You shouldn't be sitting here listening to my projects when this is identical to Fifty Hunt Road, where you allowed him to carve out a lot for his... He could take it down and build a fifty-unit building. Why didn't you ask him that?
If I can interject again, Mr. Chairman, the application that is in front of you certainly can do the division of the lot. That can be done as part of this process. What is unclear is what the legal status will be of what is left. In Fifty Hunt Road, you required the applicant to obtain a variance. So if you want to treat this exactly the way you treated Fifty Hunt Road, that would be the process.
If that's a precedent we set, I guess that's the route we will take. I have concerns that this would be further developed, and I think that's a difficult situation.
I'm on record, I'm on TV. Save it. I'm not building anything else behind there. I love this house. I'm not changing anything.
And I think, I guess it's impossible to say that there will never be a circumstance in which the town is not within a safe harbor under Chapter forty B. But it seems as though we are steering our way towards achieving the ten percent. And with enough, that would leave us above ten percent even after the...
Twenty-two.
Is reset after the census. So I don't have much in the way of concern with regard to a potential to build on the other lot through Chapter forty B. And realistically, an applicant could come back and seek to modify an existing comprehensive permit and try to do the same and bring it within it. So I don't think that that is something that needs to be a concern.
And to follow up relative to the previous speaker in rebuttal, there was obviously, part of this process, I'm required to send out a letter to all the abotters. Sent out a letter, one response. That person that contacted me was a hundred percent in opposition to this project. I worked with him, now he's in favor of it. Secondly, you might see people signing that letter that's before you. Not one of them reached out to me, talked to me about this. That's fine. But I think what you all need to know also is, why should you approve this application? And there's five good reasons you should approve it. Actually, I'll give you six good reasons. Number one, as the applicant, this is a LIP, it's a local initiative process, where I came before the town, I came before all the boards to get their approval, their input, whether or not, is this a good idea? Does the town need the housing? Is it good housing? Is it a good location? Number one, Chelmsford Board of Selectmen. We get a letter from them. Members are all in support of that. Multiple meetings with the Historic Commission. You get a letter from the Historic Commission. They're in favor of it. Again, Chelmsford Housing Advisory Board, February fourteenth. They're the board that strictly decides whether or not this should go forward as a LIP. They voted yes. Chelmsford Housing Authority, I met with David Hettison, his support staff. And I've had workings with the Housing Authority with regards to other projects. Not forty Bs, but providing Section Eight housing, where I could probably get four hundred dollars more a month to apartments. I have multiple apartments with the Housing Authority. You have a letter from the executive director in support of it. And then finally, you have a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, graciously thanking the Chelmsford Housing, excuse me, the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen, voting in favor of this. And the Department of Housing and Community Development went out, did a site walk, and she loved the property. What she really liked about the property, and Pat Wojesz was the chairman, she was at the property and did a walk-through with myself, is that this wasn't a large-scale project. She liked seeing these small forty Bs that don't look like forty Bs or large apartment complexes. Something that blends in with the community. So it's not something where you drive by and you'd say, "That had to have been a forty B." Nobody drives by Seventy-five North Road and says, "That's a forty B." If people drive by that building, they think I converted a previous barn that was on the property to apartments, when in fact, it's a brand-new building. So those are obviously the six reasons it should be supported. And furthermore, you, through your previous experience, you have other developers that completely ignore the LIP process, and they go directly to mass housing, where there's absolutely no input from any of the boards. I went through all the boards, and all of the boards are in support of this. I do understand the neighbors' concerns. But we are providing very, very good housing, a brand-new building, two brand-new apartments to a family that would be in need. And furthermore, with regards to this property at one time being subdivided, it's like most properties that get subdivided. This property that I own was part of a large farm, which was subdivided, which allowed the previous speaker to live in his house. That was owned by the family I bought the house from. All those houses in the back were subdivided. So not for that, they wouldn't be living in the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I'd ask that you support this project.
Mr. Harvey? What do you suppose are the reasons why those people decided to go to the latter route rather than coming directly to you?
That's usually how it works. Whenever I have any projects, it's usually the way it works with the developers, is the people feel more comfortable going directly to the board. Happens all the time. I'm doing a project right now on Mill Road. Large, large amount of abotters. Two responses. And what was nice is the two people that did respond to me, I went directly to their house, showed them the plans. They had concern about drainage. Addressed those concerns, and also landscaping. Landscaping I don't have to do, but I put it on the plan showing all the trees I put up. I promised someone else a fence. But most projects, people feel more comfortable just going directly to the board, which I completely understand.
I'm just wondering what they all think about the, the letter that was, that was read in with regard to two of the walls on that building being orange?
I completely disagree with that. If you looked at the building right now, not both walls are orange.
Okay.
And if they knew, if they knew the true reason why, with regards to the type of paint that was put on there, why was it painted white? They don't even know why that was done. Secondly...
Why was it done?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand because I'm just...
It's completely irrelevant. It's irrelevant to this conversation. It has, it's completely irrelevant to a forty B.
You brought it up.
No, I just...
I didn't bring it up. You brought it up.
What I was asking is, that may be why there's more opposition, because they're concerned about what's going on there, no?
I completely understand your point of view.
Yeah, that's what I'm just wondering.
No, I completely understand your point of view, but any type of project like this, you're going to have opposition. Not just this, but anything that's new. It scares people.
Oh, I get that, sure.
Whether it's a new house, everybody has concerns. And then you look at it after the fact. For instance, Seventy-five North Road, all the abotters were against it. They all had concerns. It was approved. I did so much more than what was on the plans that needed to get done. And it all worked out well. So I do understand the concerns. Oh, one other thing that I'd like to mention also is with regards to where the new structure's going to be. We all, we all know that there's a structure there currently, so it's not like subdividing a piece of land where there's not a structure. So with regards to the current structure there, the proposed new structure's going to be thirty percent less in size than with, with regards to their, now their barn. Also, it's further away from my neighbor's house, Mr. Weber, and it's also with regards to safety reasons, it's well off the street. In addition, I had an opportunity to speak with the fire department. We have a fire hydrant put on the property. I noticed going down the street, there's no fire, there's no fire hydrants on Carlisle Street. None whatsoever. That was my idea. I brought it up to the captain. So we're going to have, obviously, the building will be sprinkled to code, but there'll also be a fire hydrant out there that obviously will be beneficial to the community on Carlisle Street.
I have a comment from the general in the back. Would you like to approach the podium?
Dan Sullivan, Four Shed Lane. Have a couple of further concerns. One has to do with the comparison to Dalton and North Road as far as that identical building. Works very well in that location. On Carlisle Street, what they have is one ingress and egress, one in the same. On Dalton at North, they have two, one in, one out. Also, the property is located on an S curve with no sidewalks. And, you know, there are safety issues there, especially with the park across the street from it. There are a number of children of all ages who frequent that and cars coming in and out of the driveway with the amount of traffic that's cutting across three A to beat Route Three. At the end of, end and the beginning of the work shift is very substantial. So I do have concerns. I have much more concerns than that. But a lot of it is, it's just taken for granted that the developer's going to get it because he's the developer. And if he can intimidate anyone, he will. As far as the color of the paint, you're not going to share with us? Or why the, we don't have, why we have an orange paint? That was probably one of the biggest questions I was asked as I went around and talked to my neighbors.
I guess I should have done business with Mr. Sullivan as a realtor, and this is what I get for not doing business with him. So it's a little backslash to me. So why don't you tell everybody what your business is? It's in real estate, and I don't do any business with you, okay? And I don't have to, and I'm not going to. But that's why, that's why you're here tonight.
Oh, really?
Yeah. With regards to safety concerns, speed limit was reduced on Carlisle Street to twenty miles an hour. If you look back at the last town meeting, that's one of the streets that was reduced. So it's twenty mile an hour zone. I don't see any children at the park walking across the street to come onto my property. So I don't see any concerns there. And again, if there were any concerns, safety concerns, you have letters from all the departments. All the departments were in favor of it. Or they don't have any concerns. I won't say in favor, but I'll say there's no concerns. Got a letter from the fire department, police department, no concerns. So those are the professionals.
Are there any other further comments this evening? Please approach the podium. And your name and address, please.
Karen Christensen, sixty-six Carlisle Street. My concerns, again, this is a residential neighborhood. The typical space is an acre per single-family home. This is a historic home. It's the oldest house in East Chelmsford, House and Barn. I would personally like to see it all restored, not divided or knocked down or sold off. Again, this is, you know, I don't even know if it reaches quite an acre, but if it is, it's just. So to have it subdivided and broken up in that way, I also disagree with, I disagree with the overbuilding of the property. It is on a dangerous curve. Things are located very close to the street, both buildings. And what he's proposing isn't really going to change that, which, and again, it's on a bad corner, and there are frequent accidents there. It gets icy, people plow into, you know, there's a stone wall just after, so on and so forth. It's, it's an unsafe area, really, for the amount of, the volume of traffic. It being twenty miles an hour, actually, I've lived there most of my life, and that's actually news to me. And I don't know anyone who goes twenty miles an hour on that road. The infrastructure, I don't think, supports this. We have concerns with all of the overbuilding in the neighborhood and the amount of water supply even, where we're on water bans all summer long. And also even our school systems. We're putting trailers on the schools right now. We cannot support the people that are in town. And, you know, this is becoming, again, just more overbuilding of a residential neighborhood. So again, I would like to see this preserved. You know, so there's an option, Mr. Harvey. Preserve the house, the barn, and resell it. If you can't, Mr. Parlee did it in South Chelmsford with several historic homes and did a wonderful job. Maybe you'd rather...
If you could adjust the board, ma'am.
Sorry, maybe he'd rather sell it to someone else who could do that if he can't, but that is the option that I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments this evening?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, relating to that comment about the dangerous curve. Brian, have you had a chance to look at the site distance at the entranceway?
We did, and because it's on the, kind of the apex or the outside of the curve, there is ample site distance for thirty mile per hour speed. If you go out there today, some of it's, I won't say it's overgrown, but some of the hedges and whatnot where the, where the driveway entrance is coming out on the Carlisle Road, there would certainly have to be some trimming and some pruning of that existing vegetation. But again, because you're on the outside of the apex, the site distance actually works.
I think we've reached the end of our testimony phase here. Maybe we could get a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have a draft decision on this yet.
Correct.
I've had some experience in some recent forty B cases where there's been some feedback back and forth during deliberation session, which has led to a claim that, of a failure to act in a timely manner. Basically, there was a claim that the board accepting any sort of feedback at all during the course of the deliberation constitutes a reopening of the public hearing. And I certainly would like to avoid that eventuality.
So we could leave it open and work towards a draft decision?
I think the hearing opened on November second, so we're well within the hundred-and-eighty-day period. So I think it's a better approach to leave it open until the next hearing. I can work on a draft decision and have the ability to actually get feedback from the applicant through that process.
And I'll take a motion to continue this until March first. And charge Mr. Harvey with putting together a draft decision that could be voted on at the next hearing.
Motion to continue the application until March first.
By Mark?
Second.
Second by Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
You have any of us?
Charlie.
Brian.
We're going to take five minutes and regroup here. Give a hold of Mr. Wojesz.
Where were they breaking, they breaking this up?
No, that's his concern.
I mean, this is, this is...
Apparently he can, but what would happen if you could expand it a little?
This would rather be...
What, what, I don't...
Like, get Corum Street.
Oh, I think it wasn't involved in that one, so I can't do that. In any way, I can't vote anyway. Drum Hill's new, though, right? So how do you determine the difference between a special permit and a variance?
Uh, variance needs a hardship.
But are they spelled out somewhere where I can...
Yep.
In the book that I have?
Uh, Colleen's not back yet, but I think we can move ahead.
I'll put my own together.
We'll be hearing ninety-five Drum Hill Road, Auto Fair Realty LLC for a variance of the zoning bylaws, one ninety-five, one thirty-five. Signed by law to allow temporary advertising fixtures on the premises at ninety-five Drum Hill Road, Auto Fair Realty Chelmsford LLC.
Good evening, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name's attorney Melissa Robbins. Don't wanna yell into that, I'm sorry. Uh, from the law firm of DeShane and Farrell. Also with me tonight is Katie Enright from Howard Stein Hudson. And Sean Van Prate, he is the, um, general manager of Auto Fair Chelmsford. Uh, we're here tonight to request a variance from your signed bylaw to allow these temporary marketing fixtures. We've brought one tonight so that everybody can see what they look like. Um, I've actually, and I think if you looked at the cover letter, I asked for two determinations. One, that this is not a prohibited item, a prohibited sign. I think in your packet you have a letter from, uh, the building inspector indicating that under the zoning bylaw, this would be a prohibited sign due to the fact that this would be considered animated. Excuse me. Uh, my second request is to allow for a variance, to allow for these marketing tools at the site in a very limited nature. And I'll run through that with the board, um, on the site as a temporary sign. And I'll go through what we're looking for, for signage. Um, in either case, just so the board is aware, this is allowed, this is zoned commercial roadside, uh, CB in the town of Chelmsford. Which allows, the intent of this district is to allow for high-traffic generators, which a auto dealership is. Other things they list in the bylaw is automotive repair, open lot sales, wholesale business, retail, and other high-traffic uses. So obviously, this is a use where we're going to attract a lot of people, attract a lot of automobiles. And one of the things we need to do that is marketing devices. Uh, the signed bylaw in Chelmsford actually allows for lots of signage on the commercial district, the CB zoning district and other commercial districts. Uh, many of which we've, we've taken advantage of, which is the building signage, the freestanding pole signage. But it also allows for, uh, other signs that we have not taken advantage of. Window signs. Um, as you can appreciate, and if you've seen the structure in the rear of the property, you can have window signs up to twenty percent of the window size, um, for the property, which we've not taken advantage. Uh, we can have a lighted window sign, um, that's either internally lit or externally illuminated, including a neon sign, which we have not taken advantage of. Uh, we can also have a, a small ticker bulletin board, electronic message board, one square foot in size that has a running, um, terms on it in this, uh, district, which again, we have not taken advantage of. What we're allowed, what we're requesting is a temporary sign, not a prohibited sign. But these right here, which I think I call it over and over again in your application, is a rubber ball on a fixed stick, which you can see that's what it is, is a plastic stick, um, and a rubber ball. Um, again, that we keep seeing the term balloons and that balloons are prohibited. And I can appreciate Mylar balloons and rubber balloons and other helium-filled balloons being prohibited in the town of Chelmsford for various reasons. So I'm gonna tell you why this is not a balloon. Uh, these are fixed to one location. And a little later, I'm gonna let Katie go through the plan just to show you where we wanna fix them, okay? Um, they do not move. I do not believe these should be considered animated in any sort of way. Uh, they do not deflate or pop. Um, and I think that was a lot of what Evan's letter went to, was that they're going, trying to get balloons away in the town of Chelmsford. I mean, there is a little, there is a little visual detraction from a balloon when it either, um, deflates and then it ends up on the ground. There's environmental impacts related to a balloon. This would not have an environmental impact. This is not gonna pop. It's not full of helium. A bird cannot eat the remains of this balloon. Um, they do not cause a danger to passing vehicles, which is of, often a danger for balloons, especially the ones you see, those very tall balloons on strings, 'cause they could blow, uh, they can blow not only into, uh, traffic waves, but they could blow into Drum Hill area, and they can cause, uh, vehicle issues. Um, these temporary objects don't pose any of those risks, which I think of all of those as the primary basis for why balloons are prohibited in the town of Chelmsford. And as you can see from the lot, and I know we have to speak to the hardship, but we're very narrow at the front for this commercial business zone. And the building is located in the rear. So when you're actually driving by the site, what you see primarily, which I'm sure all of you do almost every day, is four pads on the front that have their show vehicles and maybe the first line of traffic, uh, the first line of vehicles. You can't see the other vehicles unless you pull into Slaughterhouse Road to go to Starbucks. Or if you actually pull into the site between those two vehicles, you can see the rest of the vehicles on the site. And then if you pull up a little further, you can actually see the structure in the rear. Um, not allowing this would be a substantial detriment, detriment to my client, as this is an important marketing tool, as I'm sure you can imagine. Uh, we're trying to attract attention to the automobiles, especially the ones that are out on the front pedestals to the site. We're trying to attract attention to the, uh, sales overall. Um, furthermore, these, these marketing devices are temporary, okay? We're not asking for them to be up constantly. We're asking them to be up on weekends and holidays only. And whereas, they would be put up in the morning when we, when they get to work, and they'd be taken down at the close of business. So if we do our job correctly, if this board allows a variance, Mr. Dupell would never have to enforce it because he wouldn't be working any days that these would be up, okay? Because we're only asking for weekends and holidays.
He can do all the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I work twenty-four seven, thank you.
He does, yes.
Zoning takes no nights off.
I rescind the, my previous statement. So I would, I, what I would like to do is just for Katie to give you an overview of where we would like to put these. But I just would like to keep the board to keep in mind that they are very temporary in nature. The, the zoning bylaw does allow for temporary signs. It is just for one, in these districts, through a permit through the, uh, the town, not even through a board.
What's the total number you'd like, Melissa?
I'll let Katie run through it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Katie Enright with Howard Stein Hudson. Um, as Melissa stated, um, the plan before you was a redevelopment plan. Obviously, you remember this being, um, the Sears, the Sears and Party City before it was Auto Fair. So the building location was, was pretty well set. It's set two hundred and forty feet back from Drum Hill Road. Um, so what the problem is, is when you drive by, it, it really just looks like another parking lot when you're driving by, um, this area, even with the cars on the pedestals in the front. So it's very important for people going by the site to understand that these are vehicles that are for sale and that this is a marketing, this is certainly a marketing tool. It is there to catch your eye and to say, hey, you know, we're having a sale this weekend, whether it be a holiday or, or a weekend, that we are a car dealership. Um, and this is a unique use for Chelmsford. There's only, I believe this is the only new car dealership in the town at this moment. So the balloons would be, would be scattered along, um, and I shouldn't say scattered, because they're literally, this balloon has a mechanism on the bottom of it that was specifically made for cars for sale. It goes into the window of the vehicle, as you can see from, um, the side here. So it has something that actually goes on the bottom that is affixed to the stick, that's another piece of plastic, that basically the window goes down and it holds it tight in, in place. So it's not, it can't be taken off by somebody walking by. Somebody physically has to open the window to get this balloon off of that car. Um, and as you can see, it's, it's not on a longer string, it's not on a longer stick. This, this is essentially forty-one inches from where it's affixed to the window of the car. So it's not way up in the sky. It's literally forty inches to the ball, which is affixed to the window of those cars. So along the front edge of the property, we'd like to have one on each front window, um, of the four cars that are on the pedestals. So there's eight of these fixtures along the front of the property. And we're looking to have one on each car window as it faces Slaughterhouse Road. So as you're coming into Drum Hill and you look to the left, you might catch a few on the corner of the property to again say this, these aren't just cars parked in a parking lot, because there were cars parked here forever, well before this was Auto Fair. These are cars for sale. This is a business, um, to sell cars. So you can see them up the side there. Then we'd like to have two, they have these, um, basically bouquets or three of these balloons that are together on one, on, on an affixed base that goes into the ground. So one of each of those bouquets at essentially the entrance right before you see the building. And then one on each of the vehicles that are along the display out in front of Auto Fair itself, out in front of those windows that Melissa was talking about. So again, um, a, a marketing tool for when you drive into the site to see, you know, these are the cars that we're wanting you to see as you come to the business. Um, it's not a sign on the building, it's not a sign, um, that, that's on the car. It's, it's, it's actually another marketing tool to say, you know, this is a car for sale, this is something new, this is a special occasion, um, to enter this site. And again, as Melissa said, those are, um, during a business day, weekends, we're looking at weekends and holidays. So essentially, days when people are looking for vehicles. You want people to stop in and see this area, the building and the signage for the building on the building is set back pretty far from the street. Um, and there's twenty-four, um, fixtures shown on this plan. So if you have any other questions, we do have on this plan just kind of a, a, a photo of, of, of what this typically looks like. There's also, um, a detail showing how it's mounted to the car and then also affixed to the ground. Um, and these would be taken in, like Melissa said, every evening, so there would be no worries of, of, of them being stolen overnight or moving throughout the evening. They are, they are solid in these car windows, um, and they're essentially there until someone from the dealership takes them down. Do you have anything else?
I failed to mention, they also wouldn't be put up in any sort of weather condition where they, they could be knocked out. So if it was very windy or if we were having some other sort of storm, they would also not be put up for any reason. So they would not cause any sort of safety issue by coming out of the location. And again, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
There's no writing on these?
No, this is actually the one that they had.
But you wouldn't put writing on them or anything?
No.
And are the, these cars, I, I remember when it was Sears, but are these cars all parked in the front of the lot facing the road?
There's actually four pads. They're circular pads in the front of the, right in the front here. And those would be where the, the first of these would be.
And you said to be how many of them?
It'd be one in each window in those cars. So along the front there, the entire frontage, it'd be eight total, one on each side of the driver and passenger side windows, right?
How many total on the lot?
Twenty-four.
Thirty-four.
There'd be one in each window on the front, one in, just one in the window on the side. And then there's the bouquets. Um, I can stand, I can stand up to this. The bunches of three right here. And then we have one in each window right along the building. And from a visual impact, um, these would be really visible from the roadway coming through Drum Hill. You might see the corner, like Katie said, here when you're coming up. But these ones back here, you probably wouldn't see unless you come down Slaughterhouse and go, uh, into the Starbucks parking lot. And these ones in the rear, you probably wouldn't be able to visually see, um, until you enter the site to go into the structure, which is located all the way in the rear.
And what was the timing? I apologize, I cannot get the application to come up.
Oh, that's okay.
So I can't read anything.
We're only asking for weekends and holidays.
Weekends and holidays forever?
Right. We're asking for no weekday, uh, applications whatsoever.
Is this something like regular RB districts where you have to notify a butters?
No.
You don't have to...
Well, for this variance application, we actually had to notify all the butters.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes. So all, all the butters had notice.
Did, did you get any feedback, negative, positive?
No, and I, I didn't, like, I could speak, I...
We didn't receive any letters, is that correct?
Um, all the letters that we received are in the file, standing up, waiting to be read. Right.
Got the answer.
Letters from the butters.
How many cars are on this parking lot?
I believe there's about four hundred.
Including all the service and consumer...
Right, so, four hundred.
About four hundred.
Does this open a little bit of a can of worms along that district, where everyone goes, oh, that's really cool, I want something like this?
Well, they would have to come to this board.
No, I know, but I'm just saying...
Oh, for a variance. And they would have to prove the same hardship or owing to the soil shape and topography as to the visual need and the need, the, the substantial detriment it would cause to their business by not having them. Um, and they also have to prove that, that they're within the tent, in the intent of your bylaw. So that's really what the presentation has to show. And then this board has the discretion to allow that or not allow that. Um, and they can ask, they can ask me as the applicant to, um, either revise my application to satisfy some of their conditions, or they can condition the variances, so.
And did you say, did this go through the sign committee or is there a sign committee?
No, no, we have like two people that did not.
What is the hardship?
It's the location. When you come along the front of this property here, like Katie indicated, it does still look like a parking lot. It's hard to actually tell that these are all inventory vehicles. And you can see, just like any other, uh, car dealership, you don't go buy a car dealership very often that doesn't have some sort of marketing device up front, whether it be one of these very long dangly balloons that floats very high, or some sort of marketing device towards the front of the property. So we're hoping to use these marketing devices to actually draw people in, uh, to the project site.
This is an old picture.
This is an old picture, but that's what it looks like.
Right, it's clearly, I mean, we're not talking about the original permitting, but clearly this was an improvement to the overall site. They completely, completely overdid the entire area and put a very profitable business in there. And I think if the board can agree that the business is kept very neat, the dealership is beautiful inside and out. Um, there's no trash, debris, or dirt, yes.
Hey, there they are.
So as you can see, the, the pads are set so far back from the roadway that if you're driving down, it looks like a parking lot of cars facing you, very typical to the Sears parking lot. Um, and just, we need something to bring the attention to the fact that these vehicles are for sale, especially these ones. They let, we put these nice marketing pads in the front here and then have nothing to draw attention to the actual vehicles up front.
Is there anything that the zoning laws today allow for?
Well, it depends, because right now, uh, the, the, oh, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
That's fine, I, I have a letter from Mr. Dupell to clarify some of the signage. We can go into that.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mr., and Mr. Dupell can speak for himself, but the, but, the, the letter says that this would be a prohibited sign. Yeah, so Mr., and Mr. Dupell can speak for himself, but the letter says that this would be a prohibited sign.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, and then if I want a prohibited sign, I would have to come to this board for me.
No, I'm saying, are there any other kind of method or signage that is allowed?
Yes, some of that signage that I went through earlier. We can have window wall signs, but as you can tell from the location of the building, that would be far set back into the site. So it wouldn't actually draw the attention for marketing purposes into this site.
Can you put signs right in the front windows of the cars?
We can, you can have one, Mark, you can tell me if I'm wrong. You can have one sign that has the scrolling letters that I had mentioned. One square foot bulletin board with electronic messaging. And you can have, we can have one lighted window sign, which would be, again, to the rear of the property, which can be externally illuminated, including neon lights.
No, I'm saying the cars that are in front.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just to answer your question, the vehicles that are on the lot now do have lettering, such as for sale, financing, special. So there is lettering on the vehicles up front currently.
Yes. And all of, most of the vehicles on the lot have all of the standard marketing material on or within it. Again, this is a marketing directional thing to help people that are driving down the roadway to bring attention to it. And again, where this is, where this is located in the roadside commercial district, where these high intensity uses are expected, and actually, this is properly zoned for this use, you would think some other marketing materials like balloons would be allowed in this area. But again, Chemsford has prohibited balloons, which we appreciate. But we think this is a reasonable alternative that allows for the marketing of the vehicles but does not have any of the impacts of an actual balloon whatsoever. And the nature that we're asking for is so limited that the impact would be minimal. I mean, except to get the attention to somebody that shows that we have a car dealership and we have cars for sale. I can't actually see the impact whatsoever of having this device on it, on an auto dealership.
And did you say there's different colors of those?
Yes, mhm, they come in every color of the sun.
Is it stipulated in the application of what you want?
No. I mean, but we're happy to discuss that with the board, if the board has any sort of, yeah.
Is that, next to the white truck, is that a dealership sign, right?
Yeah, to the right of it.
Yeah, that's the freestanding sign.
Yeah, that's the Nissan sign.
Yeah, and the rest of the signage is actually, you can see if, right where you are now, you see how it says Nissan right in the corner of the building, on the structure itself.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Way back.
Way back there.
We're not saying that we're not, we don't have proper signage. We use the signage for the building and we have a freestanding sign. We're just looking for marketing, to help market. And there is some, there is rules in your bylaw that allow for temporary signs. Okay, but it's one, it's one temporary sign. You go through a permitting requirement, you're allowed to have it up 14 days every quarter, but that quarter can't touch within 30 days of each other. You have to have it down for 30 days in between. And you have to get the sign permitted every year, not through this board. It's a permit process, not a special permit process. So really, what we'd be asking for is to allow for that type of process through the variance, but allow multiple, multiple of these, these marketing devices here.
Is the height specified on those?
This is the height, and they had it specified on the plan, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a couple of comments, please. No disrespect to the applicant or to the business. This project was in front of the Board of Appeals to seek a variance for a number of signs on the building, square footage of the freestanding sign. The, me being a layman, when I'm driving on Drum Hill, I know it's a car dealership. I don't need balloons to tell me that it's a car dealership.
I think that's my, I'm trying to find the hardship. And from the day that it's opened, I never drove past there and thought anything else besides that's a very big, clearly Nissan car dealership with cars for sale. So I can see the marketing aspect that you'll get some more attention, but I...
Mr. Chairman, if I just may speak to that point. I mean, I don't think there's any problem with knowing that it's a car dealership. It's actually, what you want your underlying use to do is say, this is a car dealership. It is a high-traffic use. This is exactly what we want here. Chemsford zoning bylaws work. What we're asking for relief from this board and our hardship is, we need help marketing out here. We don't want it, the devices that we have right here for our uses aren't working. We need something to actually bring attention to the actual vehicles we are trying to sell. And these are very non-offensive. They're not going to have any sort of impact to drivers except to bring attention to, bring attention to the vehicles we're trying to market.
How do you quantify the hardship?
You have to say that there's a hardship owing to the soil shape or topography. And here, it would be a shape. We have a narrow entrance and we go into the back of the, back to the site where the structure is. And the site, and as you know, this was a redevelopment site. So we used the existing structure and redesigned it to use the existing structure. And then after...
Distance of the building to the back is what?
That's right. And, you know, some of the alternatives that are allowed in the sign bylaw for the electronic sign or the signs within the windows or the ticker sign, I mean, I think those are actually more offensive than what we're asking for. And if we, even if we brought them up to, more to the front of the site and used what we, you know, said, okay, well, this is a truck window, we're going to put this in the truck window, I personally find that more distractful and offensive visually than one of these, than one of these structures here.
Question, would they be interested if they reduced the amount of those, maybe just on the front four pads or in the corner? It just seems like a lot going down a road that people just go down there to turn around to park there to go to Starbucks.
Yes, we would be happy to discuss with the Board of Reduction and the number. Again, we're looking to bring some marketing to the front and obviously just the Slaughterhouse side of this. But if there was a reduction that could be discussed with this board, we'd be happy to do that.
Just kind of...
Yes.
Can you read the letters, please?
Well, I will, sir, yes.
Yes.
If you have a discussion, you should read the letters.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, just a...
All right, let's read the letters in order that they have arrived. From engineering, there are no concerns. 95 Drum Hill Auto Fair, the Board of Health has no concerns. 95 Drum Hill Auto Fair, the police have no concerns. 95 Drum Hill Auto Fair, the water department has no concerns. Mr. Dupell has attached a letter and documents. So we are going to read his letter. With regards to the above-mentioned, I offer the following. Attached copy of the zoning bylaw 195-108, word usage and definitions, reads in part that any sign, device designed to inform or attract the attention of a person's not on the premises on which the device is located. And an attached copy of the zoning bylaw 195-30, prohibited signs, reads in part, no moving, animated, revolving, moving light, blinking or flashing sign or elements shall be permitted. Attached copy of the zoning bylaw 195-35, temporary sign guidelines. The first highlighted item is 195-108, sign, any device designed to inform, attract the attention of persons not on the premises on which the device is located, is highlighted. 195-30, no moving, the highlighted word is animated. I'm not sure I get the animation part of that, but that's okay. Temporary signs, included those mounted on wheels, trailers or motor vehicles, those vehicles or trailers or wheeled signs are regularly located for fixed display, are prohibited unless complying with all requirements of this chapter. Temporary signs for which registration is required, is highlighted. The following signs do not require a permit. However, registration is required. Such signs shall comply with all applicable signage provisions unless specifically provided otherwise in this section. Special signs, any use may erect one special sign as follows. A small wall sign not to exceed 12 square feet in sign area. A small ground sign not to exceed 12 square feet in sign area and a height of four feet measured from the average grade. A sign may be registered for no more than 14 consecutive calendar days. A sign, each used business may register a sign once per quarter of the calendar year. There shall be at least 30 days between display of registered signs. Design one is highlighted. Any increase above the basic maxima for the sign and number of signs should be justifiable because of its multiple frontages, development scale or other special needs and should appropriate in relation to the street with signage on nearby structures and the speed of vehicular travel. That is the end of Mr. Dupell's comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before you continue, I want the next letter. My, on the zoning bylaw definition of sign, I put an emphasis on any device. So if the board disagrees that that is not an animated object, any device is classified as a sign, any device. So that's considered a sign.
Yep, I agree.
One more letter from Mr. Belansky of the Community Development. I have reviewed the proposed application and submit the following for consideration. The zoning bylaw specifically prohibits these type of displays. This prohibition has been in place for a long period of time. Two, the town has prioritized sign enforcement, the removal of illegal temporary signage, resulting in commercial areas such as Drum Hill to become much more compliant. Three, several years ago, in an attempt to provide business with an opportunity for temporary signage, the town adopted temporary signage zoning provisions. Four, if approved, not only will this undermine the existing prohibition, but will also result in many other businesses in all commercial zoning districts to seek similar variance requests. That is the end of my letters.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may respond, and I'll start with Mr. Belansky's letter, just because that's where you finished. But this is a unique use in the town of Chemsford. So when you talk about starting precedent, this is your only new car dealership in the town of Chemsford. And it's unique in its location in that it's Drum Hill. It's also, I agree with Evan, that there was, there has been a, the town has really aggressively tried to take away temporary signs and it's been a precedent that balloons aren't allowed and they've been taken down. And I agree with that prohibition for all of the reasons I stated. I don't think that the balloons are necessary and I think the temporary legal sign should be taken down. And that's why this unique use of this only new car dealership in the town of Chemsford is asking for these temporary signs only. Also, we're trying to survive economically. And some things you need to survive economically are marketing. And I think this is a very limited marketing tool for this unique use on this site. And I, and I'm sorry, I didn't finish my answer on the unique characteristics of this lot. I mean, not only is it narrow, it is completely flat. So when you're actually looking at the site from the front, from the front and you're driving by, it is difficult to see the signage and even the building in the rear when you're moving by it. So some of the sign allowances that were allowed on this lot are not going to actually work for any marketing tools for a drive-by for us because you're not going to be able to see a ticker sign on the building. And we wouldn't want to put up the gaudy giant window signs that people may be able to visually see from the streetscape, which would, as you can see, that's a row of windows under that Nissan. So technically, we could put a window sign on all those windows. I mean, I think that, again, would take away from the characteristics of the site. We're trying to benefit the commercial, roadside commercial district by using something tasteful to help with marketing. I think that this site is unique, the use is unique, it's the only one in town. Again, boards don't set precedent. They're allowed to give variances for specific uses. So anybody else that wants to use something like this would have to come before this board as well.
Were you here for the last one?
I was, yeah. So I think that, you know, the board needs to take that into consideration. And again, we'd agree to something limited, we'd even agree to something time-limited if the board wanted to see if we were going to comply with the regulations and comply with what we're asking for. And I think this is a very reasonable use. I think it's conformance with your bylaw, it's certainly in conformance with your high-traffic use. It's in conformance with the EDC is looking for, the Economic Development Committee. This is a redevelopment site and we're trying to survive and market out here. So I think for all of those reasons, we're unique.
I normally don't speak, but I want to make sure you understand my memo. If you have any questions. Yeah, Evan Belansky, Director of Community Development. Normally don't speak on these matters, but I want to make sure you understand my memo. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
It's pretty clear to me.
There's a reason that these, that these kind of applications have not been coming to you. You've been on the board a long time. When was the last, Charlie, you've been on the board. When was the last time you had a signed variance request like this?
None like this.
Exactly. The reason that is, is because when staff engages with proponents, we tell them that we don't think it's viable. That's been our interpretation of the way the town's conducted its business. To us, the staff interpreting the bylaw, the town meeting, the zoning bylaw is very clear. So that's how we engage. This particular applicant, as many applicants, they realize they have a legal right to apply and that's why they're here. But if you, if you open this door, we are, me, I know that I will start telling applicants that this is a viable option. Up until now, my advice to an applicant is not a viable option, viable option. It's not viewed favorably. So as long as you understand what the ramifications are.
I totally understand you, Evan, but I do think this is a unique situation.
I'm not disagreeing with whether it's unique or not. Every applicant will say their property, their situation is unique. You know what Drum Hill looks like. Every property will be coming forward with a similar application. That's just common sense.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience who would like to comment, either in favor or against this application? Anyone else? I understand it's late. I don't think we can skip the public input, sometimes you wish you could. That being said, I think we can close this and take this up right now.
Make the motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second by Nancy, all in favor? It will be the final loss and Jerry will not be voting. We have opinions.
So I, then I go back to, I don't really see the hardship. I think there's marketing involved, but I think having 400 shiny cars is also marketing.
Don't we first have to decide if it's going to be a sign? And then we get to the next step with a lot of the variances we do?
We could, we could decide if it's a sign. I personally think it is a sign.
Yeah, I do too.
By definition, and that is any device designed...
No, I agree. I'm just saying, I think we need to...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's possible. If somebody thinks it isn't, then we can just toss it from there.
In agreement that this is an application where that is a sign and they are in front of us correctly.
I would be okay if there's a few of these, but not millions, not hundreds.
We are at 24 is the application.
Twenty-four, I didn't, sorry, I was...
The amount is 24. It is, it is a difficult decision. I understand Evan's point of view to a neater area, more clean. I do understand the marketing perspective of it. We're open for business, I think, is what it says when you see the sign. It's a limited time, we can look at the time, we can look at the quantity. We can vote and see where it lies as it sits. It's the flavor of the board to decide what they would like to see there. I certainly agree with Charlie that I think that it's more than we would give, the 24 is a lot.
No, you made, yeah, we did continue it, so you...
Beth, you said you see a hardship.
I think, looking at that Nissan sign way in the back there, it is very difficult to...
No, but the one right in the front.
I understand that. It is, you know, so that you're down to the one in the front. And it's, you know, I think of almost every auto dealership I see has the banners, flags, balloons.
But none of those in Chemsford.
We're trying not to do that here.
When you get to Drum Hill Ford, I think there's, it's not Drum Hill Ford anymore, is it? Yeah, maybe those were...
Mr. Chairman, is there any way we could approve this with a time limit and see if it, if it like fits in with the town?
You could do it contingent upon review in six months or something.
I don't see what that's going to do. Are you going to get feedback from neighbors or I'm not...
But I think if we approve it, we're going to definitely be inundated with requests for this from almost every commercial business. So that's a challenge. Personally, not overly upset by it. I think 24 is too many. But I do understand that when you let one, you, you know, why do they get to do it and no one else? Is it just because it's a car dealership and they're very flavorful in their advertising typically that we should allow that? I, you know, can't speak for the board.
I mean, there are lots of businesses that are offset from the street that don't have the advantages of 400 pieces of advertising in their parking lot. And, you know, Subway doesn't get to put all sorts of stuff to say, I'm a sandwich shop up against the street. They have... they have their sign and they get by. So the fact that they're offset from the street, yes, they are, but they also have lots of advertising that's.
No, I tend to agree. I, I just don't like the idea of them. Just, I understand their situation, but.
Torn.
I, I am.
Had it not been a variance, it would have been a hardship.
I, I am too, it's not like a, but.
And the variance does, does make it more difficult than just a special permit. I, I guess I really think that the town has worked very hard to limit this kind of thing because you let one, you're somewhat obligated to, to let another, so that's a challenge. We can vote, I think, and just see what happens. If no one has a suggestion for a compromise, it's suitable as far as allowing any. I mean, you have to grant the variance to allow one, or maybe two, I think one might have been an acceptable number, though I didn't put it there on that.
I'm going to make a motion to reject the application as submitted.
I second.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Oh, no, Charlie voted no.
Oh, you voted against it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'm board one.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate your, your headache.
I know, right?
Moving slowly along here. It is 10 past 10, much later than my bedtime. I am going to go ahead and hear the last thing, which I think is a review of our letter. Paul, is that correct?
You on seven, Gormeau?
There should be enough copies of the decision in the folder. Somebody grab it for you?
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to give you a, a quick update of where we are.
That would be fun.
Okay, again, for the, for the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins, I'm here for the applicant for Pineview Apartments LLC. I know it's been some time since we've been before the board, we had a, we had a lovely blizzard, and then we had a little quorum issue at the last meeting, so it's been a lot of time since we've been here. What we were tasked to do.
To clarify that, because, you know, we've got a draft decision that has dates of when the public hearing was held.
Yes.
And the draft actually noted that the hearing was closed on January 4th, but that wasn't the case, it's still open.
No, so the hearing is still open, and the reason we did that is because we wanted to go through the draft with the board and have any discussions that the board may want to have.
That's most of correct.
Granted all necessary extensions, so there's not any sort of approval issue here whatsoever for this comprehensive permit. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, is just to give the board the opportunity to run through this, and I know your town council's gone through this, and Evan's gone through this, there are some marginal comments in the, yeah, just a few marginal comments.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you recall at the last section of the public hearing, the board asked Attorney Robbins to prepare a draft decision, and that draft decision was actually based off of the draft decision that this board issued for 50 Hunt Road, sort of took that same structure and framework, and then added site-specific conditions. I reviewed that draft decision, made a number of suggested changes, and that's what's left in front of you tonight, there's still a few outstanding comments that the board needs to review. I've made some additional changes with regard to the dates, so that, as I just discussed with regard to the, the hearing not having closed, and this is still part of the open public hearing session, which, as I noted earlier, is a good thing. So if you want to just run through the decision, I guess, and see if you've had any questions or concerns, sort of similar that we did with the 73 Marshall, not Marshall, 73 Dalton last hearing.
Yep.
Which I think we were able to work through pretty quickly.
Five minutes or so, and you do this, if you have questions.
I think the only areas that we need to stop for sure are where there's marginal comments. If the board has no problem, so we get to 15, then when everybody gets to 15, we can discuss that comment.
I just see a typo in paragraph one, though.
Yeah. Blame, Melissa.
It spells, it spells 84, and then parentheses 52, and then it spells three and puts six in parentheses.
We were trying to sneak it by. Okay, yeah, I'll change that. Thank you.
Oh, I see, so the 84 is stricken.
Okay.
Nice try, Melissa.
And then three and six in the next line.
Eighty-four balloons.
And it is three residential structures, correct?
Six.
Six, it's six, okay. My buddy was three.
Yeah, and then in the second paragraph, obviously, it's not closed.
Yeah, but I've already corrected that.
Strike that. Paul, are you going to make running changes?
Going on right now?
Oh, okay, I will not. Thank you.
They're concerned about a particular condition they can help with?
So Steve has a question on item 10A. At the time of the filing of the application, the number of low and moderate income housing units in town constituted 7.8% of the total year-round housing units in town. That probably is right, that's like almost 80% of the 10% required.
On that, and that's, and that's based on the information that was provided by DHCD, which may not have been 100%.
Not 10%, 7.8% of the total housing, we have to get to 10.
Is that right?
That's back in April as well.
It's 80% of the affordable housing we've achieved, and then this is adding.
We're at 9.2 today, but back when this was applied for, well, back, no, the SHI is dated April 26, 2017.
We at 9.2, Evan, including these numbers?
Not including this project.
Oh, great, great.
When was this project applied? July. July 26. Yeah, so April would have been the, the most recent SHI that DHD published. In either event, we're certainly not over the 10% currently, or on, back in April, or back in July, so the 10% statutory minimum has not been met.
Right. I just thought we were closer than 7.8%.
We're closer currently. But for a comprehensive permit application, all of these issues are based upon the time the application was filed with the board appeals. So for instance, if there's an application that's filed with this board today while we're under 10%, and tomorrow we go over 10%, for the rest of that six-month hearing process on that application, the town is still under 10% with regards to that application. Anything that comes in afterwards, then the town is over 10%.
That's after the decision is, is voted, is that correct? After the decision is.
With the clerk.
Yes, it's based upon when the application is filed, that's when you determine consistency with local units.
Right, but in order to count, it has to be approved.
Yeah, so once this board issues its decision, and that decision is filed with the town clerk's office, the units are automatically counted onto the town's subject housing inventory. They're subject to removal.
Will this put us over the 10%?
No.
Got to be close, right?
Another 100 and something odd units, so this will cut it in half.
It was like 140.
I think it was that, probably.
It's getting there.
Right?
Hold on. Take it easy, Mike.
Stronger than that. Curiously strong.
I don't know what I laced it with.
That's curiously strong. So have we reached 15 yet? Page four, or has everyone just gone right by it?
I went by 50, I ran it, I think that.
So maybe we can discuss that.
We can back up to that, I thought we were going to do it, me too.
My recollection was there had been some form of discussion regarding vegetation in the.
Yes, it's shown on Lorraine Black's revised landscape plan.
Okay, so we, so we should reference that. Before we leave, before we reference anything on the list of plans on page six, do those plans include the landscaping plan, the lighting plan, and the architectural plan?
Yeah, the David Cockham of DB2 is the architectural plan, the lighting plan is part of.
Would DB, what'd you say?
See at the bottom, it says, landscape is architect David Cockham, DB2 Architecture. Is this what, are you in the six?
Page six, A2.
I thought you were listing the.
The list of plans, where in the decision is the landscaping plan, the lighting plan, and the architectural is referenced?
The architectural is listed right at the bottom. The proof plan shall also consist of.
I see that, okay, yep.
Set DB2 Architecture, David. So we should add Lorraine Black's plan to this. Is the Lorraine plan a part of your plan set?
Is it one of the detail sheets?
Yeah.
No, it is not one of the details.
Okay, so we'll add the landscaping sheet, we just need the, the date, the last revision date? Was there a separate lighting plan?
The lighting plan was included in the site plans.
Okay. So if we reference the landscaping plan, then comment number 15 does not need to provide any more detail, other than a reference to it.
Right.
Unless you'll provide me those references.
Yeah.
On A11, I also had questions as to how that is determined. Who oversees the park at this time?
The town.
What's the name, what's the name of the park?
Friendship Park Association, something similar to that?
Harmony. Harmony Park.
Is there an association of sorts that administers that, or?
Nick Carly, the director, the, the park coordinator from, out of DBW, is coordinating the efforts of the neighborhood fundraising and the town's efforts. So that's where this provision came from. The number came, came out of Nick and his interaction.
Yeah, no, I think it was a good idea, I just don't know, the question is, what specific purpose was this intended for? Should it be mentioned? Unless Nick is, knows he wants.
I mean, I think, I think improvements to the existing playground, Harmony Park on Carlisle Street.
Yeah, specifically that park, because it is the local.
Yep.
It's the only one up there for miles.
Right.
But I don't think you need to specify what the specifics are, we, as long as you understand.
Administers, as long as it ends up in Harmony Park.
For the existing Harmony Park playground?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's probably better.
I think that one was E12.
Did I read to E12?
I can jump right there, yeah.
Oh, it's a heavy 40B.
No, no, that's what I'm waiting for.
Oh, okay.
What's the timing? I mean, you're saying it's going to move faster, what, what's faster mean?
I mean, the problem is that we need construction on Saturday to keep construction moving, and I, and Mr. Burgland, who's here with me tonight, can speak to the necessity for some Saturday construction time, and I think it's generally accepted to have some Saturday construction.
So indoors.
The language that's in here right now is what we've used for every 40B.
Right, I don't mean for 40Bs, I mean for.
We allow indoor construction on Saturdays. That's what we talked about. That's a, that's been our boilerplate. If you want to treat this one differently, you certainly can. That's what we talked about during the meeting, yeah.
There's a lot of houses close by, I think that's a reasonable increase.
No, I do too.
What about for normal construction, though, non-40B projects, are they allowed to do outside construction on Saturdays? I think they are, from like a limited time period.
Well, we, we treat 40Bs differently than single-family, for obvious reasons.
But I think here, I mean, we have a couple things going here, we have modular units that we're trying to move in pretty quickly, and it may be difficult for us not to do any work on Saturday, and we'll definitely make the timeline for construction longer. So that's why I was asking for some sort of time on Saturday, so that we could get the units in and do some construction, and we're happy to limit the timeframe to, you know, just the site construction, where we're putting, getting the structures on, we're happy to limit the time on Saturdays, so that it's not offensive or too early in the morning for neighbors. We're just asking for some relief under this section, so that we can move it along. I think it's in everybody's best interest to get the site work and initial stuff done.
And if I might, the primary reason for not allowing work on Saturdays is to not disturb the neighborhood's noise. The background of this whole site is 495, so the noise differential is going to be out there now.
The neighbors on the other side?
Lots of neighbors.
Yeah, what about the, the non-495 side of it?
495 carries throughout the site, so right up.
Just the noise of 495 would be there constantly anyways.
Well, and Mr. Chair and members in board will tell you as well, these contracts for Mr. Burgland are going to require, I mean, he's going to sign a contract for these construction workers to come on, and the contracts are going to run Monday through Saturday, that's just typical construction time, so, I mean, you're really.
She wants more than that.
I just am looking for a little time on Saturdays, it can be a shorter timeframe just during the initial construction phases, so we can get this moving, and Mr. Burgland can get his obligations done from his contractors and get this done quicker.
So what are you proposing?
Proposing just a limited time on.
What time?
Eight to two. I mean, that's not too early.
So, I mean, time or days, weeks, time?
Okay, so hours of day. Yeah, daytime hours, I'm looking for eight to, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so not too early in the morning, and then how many weeks for the actual act of construction?
Well, subcontractors will do that to the very end, I would, I would want to work on Saturdays, to limit, to limit work on Saturdays would be another.
Well, once the buildings are sheathed and you can do inside. But how much time would you need to actually get the structures in? Like, what are we looking for construction phase for that? That's what they're asking.
Overall, the whole project will be in the, in eight months.
No, no, just the initial, three months. So three months of Saturday time from eight to two.
From date of permit issue.
Benzema construction. Yeah, that's it.
Just get us in the building.
Right.
I haven't heard the board say what they want to do yet. Does everybody think about that?
Disruptive.
Still too disruptive?
But remember, for every day that you're making longer, you're making another Monday build day, Tuesday build day, Wednesday build day, so by taking away your Saturday build day, you're just extenuating this, the construct, early construction phase longer.
Yeah, two weeks.
So it's not as if, I mean, it's not as if we're asking for.
Two weeks is what, not even two weeks.
Right.
So it's two weeks on this overall schedule versus the Saturdays.
are on Monday through Saturday. So, I mean, this actually, for my other projects, it would not tell you that this creates a construction hardship, but this one it actually does, that's why I'm asking for some leeway here. This is a little unique here, we're doing modular units out here, we're trying to get the site work done early, trying to get the modular units on, and again, I mean, even if it is two weeks, it still is a shortened amount of time. So the same construction noise, some people don't work Monday through Friday, they work Saturday, Sunday, I mean, so, I mean, impacts to lives are different, putting it all on Monday and Friday.
Are there certain months when you need this? Is it April, May?
Just if, that's big construction.
So April, May? I mean, is it May, June?
It's as soon as, I mean, as soon as we get a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, I think in middle of summer, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, sure.
Maybe that's the reasonable approach.
Just to allow it in the summer?
No, not, not, allow it...
Oh, not allow it in the summer?
Allow it April, May, or May and June.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, and, you know, we can't predict that way, that way you can push your project along.
Now, it's June 31st?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out timeline right now.
I know. If it's a major issue, if it's a major issue, you can come back to the board and have a conversation.
The way we have it, nobody else has any problems with it.
Well, come back to the board and ask when we commence construction.
If you can't get your project up and running...
Prior to the summer months.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to think of timeline right now, we're in January, let's assume the board...
It's February.
Oh, my God, it's February, February, okay.
Say July 1st.
We have 90 days to final approval.
That's when everybody opens their windows.
March, April, May, we have pre-construction with this board, June, July, so we're not in the ground, we're not actually starting construction until August, so you're looking at fall build.
Maybe that's not bad.
So you, I mean, there's, I'm just...
September 1st, and then the summer's over?
Right. I can't see, I, I mean, I really can't see us being ready any sooner than that, just because of the regulatory process here, so I would be comfortable with that. It would not be during the summer months, it could only commence on September 1st, and if then, if we can start construction on August 15th, we can come back to the board and ask for concessions.
Rather reasonable approach, September 1st would...
Nancy, I want to thank Nancy.
Allowed from eight to two.
Bye Nancy.
Are you still, still...
No, I mean, you had some thoughts about it?
I mean, that helps.
I'm just thinking, if it was September, October, November, then they'd be done with that into December, so that would probably be better.
They do need to, if you're starting in September or August would be a target.
If they pull 12 days out of December, that would be good.
That's tough, right, you want to be, another module is faster, they'll be back inside.
So otherwise, it would be better. So a revision to the condition that says, "Construction activity shall be conducted between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM on Saturday, except no outside work shall be allowed from..."
8:00 PM and 2:00 PM.
No, no, inside eight to five, outside eight to two.
You're correct, you're correct.
Well, no, no, that's what we were saying.
I think that's what he said.
Let's let him finish reading.
That's not quite what I was saying, so I'll have to...
Then fix it.
So, eight to two outside work.
Two outside, eight to two.
Eight to two for outside, yeah.
And did we already talk about where they'd be?
8:00 AM, 2:00 PM on Saturday, except no outside work shall be allowed from June 1st to September 1st?
They're all set, yeah, inside work is year-round, if they're doing inside work, that's Saturdays. I don't think there is a time, or there may be.
And access and egress is through Gorm Street.
Correct.
By a Gorm Street.
For construction vehicles for the entire...
The only allowance was...
There will be some...
When you were doing the...
Yeah, because there's utility work.
Utility work, you've got to be down there.
Right, so we, and we will go through all of that during the pre-construction meeting and come up with our trucking plan and the limit.
I mean, you have to, you've got to be right there.
Right, so we will come up with all that during our pre-construction meeting.
Okay. And there's a typo in there, so.
Oh, which one?
Building amounts, something like that.
Which, which number?
Building MGS, building MGS.
It's the highlighted part.
Oh, okay.
Now, were there conditions at some point about a gentleman's property that was going to be dug up?
Yes, it's in here.
Yeah.
Where is that?
I think it's E25.
D or E, I'm sorry.
Letter E25, it's on page 17 of 29. And we say we're limited to what's shown on the plan, even though it's paper street, we're going to bring it back to the light condition that it was when we disturbed it, and we're going to limit the disturbance time to the extent possible.
Yep, and they were good with that, so. Who's that?
The person that has been maintaining that forever?
I don't, I don't want to give you the impression that they've reviewed and signed off on that language, but I think this language is consistent with council's recommendation to the board.
Right, but it is also consistent with what we discussed when we were, when we were with them, so.
It's going to, it's going to, it's going to obligate the developer and that private property owner to manage it.
Why that's not coming and going from Gorm Street, why it's cutting through someone's personal property?
It's not.
It's not.
The utilities are.
If you have to...
Utilities are.
They'll be working alongside his property, but what he did, for right or wrong, was he sort of maintains that entire area, and the agreement was that the construction would dig up the utilities, install them as needed, and refurbish that to the same thing, and then at that point, that gentleman plans to still care for that land. The ownership of the land is within the right of the Pine View, whatever it is, condominiums.
Can he put a fence on it, everything, the whole thing?
They're going to allow him use of that space again.
So, and Mr. Chairman, to make it clear, the board isn't making any determinations with regard to rights to use that or not use that.
Right.
That's correct, we are making no determination.
Specifically states that the applicant is shown a colorable right to use that area, but to the extent that any person has a determination that they don't have that right, you know, they can follow whatever legal rights they have with the...
Whatever legal requests they have, but they say that's their land, and eminent domain is applied.
Or if they're making a claim for adverse possession or something like that, they can certainly file an action in the appropriate court of competent jurisdiction. This board simply does not have the authority to make determinations of property rights. That's outside of the jurisdiction.
We just want to see it pretty again.
Right, and we'd agree to do that.
E24. E24 is just...
Yellowed, a shelter.
A bus shelter shall be provided.
Right.
We'll do it before any OPs, and we'll meet with the school department to ensure that it's in a proper location. Yeah.
So this actually says prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall contact the school department to discuss options related to school busing. A bus shelter shall be provided, so let's add prior to the issuance of any occupancy permits.
If you actually cross up that highlighted part, it goes on, it says that we should consult with the school department, and the bus shelter should be constructed prior to the issuance of occupancy permits.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, so that's probably...
Get rid of that entirely.
Yeah, see if you want it to lead down to the bus shelter shall be constructed prior to...
Exactly, yeah. Well, I deleted the yellow part, and just the applicant shall consult with the, regarding location of bus shelters, and the bus shelter shall be constructed prior to the issuance of any occupancy permits.
Sure.
Good enough. Anything else? Something in waivers, something...
Did we define on G2 what the Knox Lock Box is going to operate the gate? Would that be just defined a little better?
Fire department will dictate that.
Right, and we agreed to meet with them prior to the installation and make sure it was up to their standards, whatever they wanted.
I'm just wondering, because we also requested that for the gate specifically, I mean, the Knox locks will go on all the buildings as well, correct?
For fires, there is, there is another condition in here about the sprinklers and the conformance with their fire regulations.
Our boilerplate language that we use for the...
Yeah, we actually took a dray for the sprinkler.
The sprinkler systems.
Right, the gate was just a little...
The gates say some sort of lock in accordance with whatever the fire department wants.
Okay.
So there is one comment still in here with regard to section 202-3, number of dwellings per lot, the request of a waiver from the subdivision rules and regulations, and I just had a notation on there that I'm not sure why this requested waiver is necessary, because this is not a subdivision.
Just a matter, of course, I always ask for waivers from all subdivision regulations, unless...
And what we've done with regard to the other subdivision requests is saying the board took no action on this waiver request, because it is not a subdivision, division, therefore it's not allocable.
And that's my general request, either the building, the building inspector or the board direct me that it's not necessary, so I'm satisfied with that response.
What I will do is, that's the exact provision for 202-3C. The board took no action on this waiver request, there's no substantive relief as sought by the applicant, and is not required to obtain subdivision relief because the issuance of a competent permit constitutes issuance of all necessary local approvals. Any else?
I have nothing else.
Looking for that vote. Close the hearing first.
The last, Karen Christensen, 66 Carlisle Street. The last meeting, you had said that you had 40 days to vote on this issue. We're at 60, so legally, what are the implications of that?
So, a comprehensive permit application is filed, the board has 180 days to go through the hearing process, in fact, the applicant is granted extensions throughout the course. Once the hearing is officially closed, you have 40 days to deliberate and render your decision. This hearing has not yet closed, that's going to be the next action the board is going to take, so that 40-day timeframe has not started running.
You did say that two meetings ago, that you had 40 days.
Only if the hearing closed. And that, there was a discussion as to whether or not to leave the hearing open, or whether to close the public hearing, and that's one of the reasons to have kept the public hearing open, was to allow this discussion without being under that 40-day deadline. And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, if the board does fail to meet one of its requirements for closing the public hearing, the result is that it's a constructive approval and the board loses all ability to impose conditions.
We sort of waive our rights at that point.
Correct.
Well, I guess I am looking for a... I'm looking for a motion to approve the...
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing, correct.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, by Steve, all in favor?
Now go.
Okay, now I am looking for a motion to approve the application for Pine View Condominium LLC, 7 Gorm Street and 1 Pine View Ave, Chelmsford, based on the draft decision presented this evening, with amendments as noted. That is not a motion, I need a motion, I cannot make a motion.
That's a long motion.
Same, so moved. It fixes it all.
I make a motion to approve the application for a comprehensive permit under MGL Chapter 40B for the property at 7 Gorm Street and 1 Pine View Avenue.
I second the motion.
Second by Mark, all in favor? unanimous, good luck with it. Thank you.
Melissa, you have papers, one last thing.
You got your balloon, Melissa.
I'm leaving them forever. I do have one more administrative action, Mr. Chair, I actually need Mr. Haverty not to pack up, just in case you have questions. I will say it in less than 10 words, though. The administrative action you have in front of you is for the signature of the acknowledgement for the regulatory agreement for the Hunt Road regulatory agreement. This is the standard acknowledgement the board has signed for me for the last three applications. It acknowledges the authority of mass housing to perform their requirements, and it states that any conflict your comprehensive permit may have as to the subsidizing agency's requirements, that the subsidizing agency's rules and regulations win.
I have no concerns with that, it's a standard procedure.
Yes, so I...
Do you have three copies?
And I have, I have three copies for you to sign in triplicate, and I would just ask the board to endorse the acknowledgement for 50 Hunt Road.
I respectfully state that that was more than 10 words.
For a lawyer, it was...
They get more expensive as the minutes go by now.
Oh, yeah, please sign those, too.
It's gorgeous. Can I hang it upside down, put a light inside?
No, just make him sign one.
I've never signed one.
I've never signed one.
No, you have, well...
I don't think that happened.
I did, maybe you were missing, because letting Bud... Did they all leave to sign, or just...
I only need three, I only actually need three to sign, but I'm happy if I have like, yeah, definitely chairman.
I'm happy with so many.
Is that all three pages?
That's, it's a single page, and that's three, yes.
I think the lawyer should sign.
Yeah.
Oh, I definitely think so.
I think, oh my God.
Definitely.
I want to see the ESQ on there.
I think the lawyer in the const...
Yeah.
If you're packing, you're packing today? You can take care of...
So you do it. No, he ran away. What is he not packing? Runs away.
Wait, 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 run away from us.
You did a great job of...
Word of 11.
We're not having one in Little March, right?
Someone make a motion to...
Oh, yeah, you guys can adjourn, so they turn off the camera.
Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Meeting is adjourned.